You ready?
Yep.
The hour of 6:30 having come and gone, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, March 11, 2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Evers.
Here.
Field.
Here.
Figueroa Cole.
Here.
Govender Rajan.
Here.
Uguer.
Here.
Harrington McKinney.
Here.
Knox.
Here.
Latimer Burris is excused. Madison.
Here.
Martinez Rutherford.
Here.
Miazze.
Present.
Rommel.
Present.
Tischler.
Here.
Ervier.
Here.
Vidiver.
Here.
Waelia.
Here.
Bennett.
Here.
Conklin.
Present.
Curry.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have corn.
Thank you. As usual, I will remind us that we're here to do the business of the residents of Madison and ask that we do so with kindness and grace, and in particular refrain from using any profanities in our remarks, regardless if we are staff, members of the body, or members of the public coming to testify. And our first item is honoring resolutions. Item one is Legisdar 87344 reaffirming the City of Madison's commitment to supporting pollinator health and authorizing the City of Madison to take the mayor's monarchical pledge. We do not have anyone here to receive the resolution, so President Figueroa Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item one. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item one? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item one. And that will take us to item two, which is Legisdar 87446, a presentation. We are back to our regularly scheduled poetry recitations. And I believe our poet is online. I'm not sure if our poet laureate is online as well, but you'll recall that the poet laureate schedules folks for us to hear from regularly, and today we're hearing from Brianna Groh. Brianna?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brianna Groh. I am a poet living here in the City of Madison and very grateful that our poet laureate, Stephen Espada-Dawson, has asked me to read. And sorry, I can't be there in person today, but grateful for the online option. So I will be reading a poem called "Winter Smell." It's May, and every week a new flower is blooming. I see it maybe a handful of times, stop and smell it twice if I'm doing a good job of being present in the world. Now it's turning brown and falling over. I could breathe in every last bud and still wouldn't really remember until next year, when I realized I've been smelling hyacinths for decades, moments adding up to perhaps five minutes. I spend longer than that spacing out on the toilet every day. My mother called again, and I ignored it this time. I already spent the whole morning waiting for her to tell me what the CAT scan found. And it turns out abnormalities isn't code for you've got stage four lung cancer. I can't go back and forth like that, preparing to love her the very best I can in the time she has left, and reassuring myself I can always call her back. It's January, and all the flowers are long gone now. I mostly say I don't like winter, but at least I've got nothing to lose when I wake up expecting the sky and the ground to look the same. Then I see some chickadees and a cardinal in a pine tree, and I feel pretty lucky. I've heard winter has a smell, too, and someday it won't anymore. Will I miss it if I can't say what it was? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think you can hear or see in the room, but you're getting a round of applause, and we appreciate you. And thanks also to our poet laureate, Stephen Espada-Dawson, for scheduling these. Our next item is disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on today's agenda? Alder Field.
Thank you, Mayor. On item 42, I'm an employee of the University of Wisconsin-Madison. That will not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler?
I'm still an employee at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and this will also not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other disclosures or recusals on today's agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, and two, items which alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Agenda items that are supermajority items. Supermajority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Legisdar item 87333, reapproving a certified survey map of property owned by the county of Dane located at 8603 to 8901 Femrite Drive. Fourteen items required. Legisdar item 87461, reapproving the certified survey map of property owned by Timothy Netzel at 4005 Marsh Road LLC, located at 4001 to 4005 Marsh Road. So the fourteen votes are required to adopt this item. Legisdar item 87163, amending the 2025 stormwater utility operating budget to recreate position number 1073 as a 1FT position. Fifteen votes required. Legisdar item 87164, amending the 2025 stormwater utility operating budget to add a position of environmental specialist inspector. Fifteen votes required. Legisdar item 87281, amending the 2025 adopted capital budget of engineering facilities management to transfer existing geo-burring from the general facilities improvement program to the senior center facility improvements program. Fifteen votes required. Legisdar item 87285, amending traffic engineering's 2025 capital budget to appropriate additional funding in 2025 related to the city chair and federal chair for two carbon reduction programs, CRP, grants for traffic signal controller and LED traffic signal projects that were originally budgeted in the agency's capital improvement plan for years from 2026 to 2028. Fifteen votes required. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Legisdar file 86825, amending section 33.016 of the Madison General Ordinances related to alder appointments to boards, commissions, and committees to change the appointments terms. The recommendation from CCEC is to adopt. Agenda item 87288, creating section 2.37 of the Madison General Ordinances related to removal hearings to prescribe hearing procedures to consider removal of alders from the common council. The recommendation from CCEC is to adopt. Agenda item 87293, adopting the City of Madison's required five-year, 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan at the first year, 2025 annual action plan incorporated therein, approving submission of the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known by ASHAD, and accepting the associated analysis of impediments to fair housing choices report. The recommendation from the finance department is to adopt. I'm sorry, from the Community Development Block grant is to adopt. Agenda items excluded by one request of alders or speakers registered by noon on March 11. Legisdar item 86990, creating section 28.022 to 00704 of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at 77 Silverloin Strip from TRV2, Traditional Residential, Area 2, to District 2TR-U, which is Traditional Residential Urban 1. There's speakers. Agenda item 86993, creating section 28.022 to 00707 of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of the property located at 6303 Porters Road and 4821 Hopkett Road from Temp A, Temporary Agricultural District, to A, Agricultural District, and creating section 28.022 to 00708 of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at 6303 Porters Road and 4821 Hopkett Road from Temp A District to TRP District. Registered speakers. Legisdar item 87045, adopting the Stock Creek Corridor Plan. We have registered speakers. And legisdar file 87044, amending or repelling various sections in chapters eight, 10, and 33 of the Madison General Ordinances related to reorganizing of city boards, commissions, and committees. We have registered speakers for that. Legisdar item 76, or 86, I mean, agenda item 76 and legisdar item 86736, approving the preliminary plat of the LEO leaving on property address as 6303 Porters Road and 4821 Hopkett Road. We have registered speakers. Legisdar item 77. I mean, I'm sorry, I am... Need some coffee today. Legisdar item 86824 is a substitute, amending the report of the Lamb House Block Ad Hoc Plan Committee. We have a registered speaker. Legisdar item 85327, amending section 5.20 of the Madison General Ordinances to modify the police civilian oversight board appointment process. That item is set up for referral, Mayor, so unclear on why it's here. I missed that one. That's number 78. Legisdar item 87483, adopting the updated elected and appointed official code of ethical conduct, introduction of new business for referral without debate. Alder Duncan excluded for the purpose of adding additional referrals shown below. Common Council Executive Committee on August 5th, Board of Public Works on May 7th, Plan Commission, May 12, Board of Parks, May 14, Landmarks Commission, May 19, Madison Public Library Board, June 5th, Equal Opportunities Commission, June 12, Police Civilian Oversight Board, June 18, Transportation Commission, June 25th, Affirmative Action Commission, July 3th, Economic Development Committee, July 10th, Alcohol License Review Committee, July 16, Disability Rights Commission, July 24th, and back to common council on August 5th. And that is the consent agenda, unless there's additional people on the additional speakers. That's all I got. Thank you.
Are there any additional items that alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Tischler?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to remove number 55 for discussion.
Number 55?
Legisdar 86825.
Thank you. Are there any other items that alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes. Item number 5887288. Item number 7885327. Item number 5687044.
I'm sorry, Alder. For the first item, what's the agenda number? That's...
Is that not correct?
It's the legisdar number, Alder, but it's item 58. Thank you. All right, so items 56 and 78 are already excluded, so the additional item is item 58.
Correct.
And 55. All right. Thank you, Alder. Are there any other alders wishing to exclude items from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none. Then let me go through that again just to make sure that we got everything. Items 59 and 60 require 14 votes. Items 67, 68, 73, and 74 require 15 votes. On items 55 and 58, the recommendation is to adopt, as is the recommendation on item And then the following items will be excluded from the consent agenda. Items 17, 20, 35, 55, 56, 58, 76, 77, 78, and 105. I'm sorry, 105 is just adding referrals. If there's no objection, we can include 105 in the consent agenda. Alder Miazze?
Oh, yeah, just if you can, Madam Mayor, add my name to number 88.
The clerk will add you as a sponsor to item 88. Is there any objection to leaving item 105 on the consent agenda with the referrals as shown? Seeing no objection, we'll leave item 105 on the consent agenda with those additional referrals. So let me go through that again. Items excluded from the consent agenda... Sorry, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Just a clarification. So with item number 105, there are additional referrals? Is that...
That's correct. It's just, it's, as listed on your consent agenda document, it's just for introduction.
Okay.
So it's just adding referrals.
So I guess my question is, is that when there are additional referrals added, there's no clarification of why they're added? Is that...
We can certainly ask the maker of the motion to clarify.
I'd like that.
Do that as part of the consent agenda.
So I want to remove that, and I'd like to know why these... So I want to remove that, and I'd like to know why these additional ones was added.
Alder, is there any objection to having the alder state that as part of the consent agenda motion?
No, I'd like it separated.
All right, we'll separate it then. All right, so one more time then. The following items will be excluded from the consent agenda. Item 17, 20, 35, 55, 56, 58, 76, 77, 78, and 105. And we have no additional introductions or corrections. Anything else on the consent agenda? Don't need to run through it again. Okay, so then on the consent agenda, President Figaro, call the motion, please.
I'll adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and the recommendations therein? Seeing no objection, we will adopt those items. And move on to public comment. And our first item with registrants wishing to speak is item 17, which is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property locating, it's located at 77 Sirloin Strip from TRV2, Traditional Residential Varied, to TRU1, Traditional Residential Urban 1. And item 17, we have a number of registrants wishing to speak. Our first registrant will be Julian Walters of District 7, representing Eminent Development Corporation, to be followed by Simon Hanna, to be followed by Tommy Hanna. Do we have Julian?
Yes, I am here. I am also joined by Ross Tricke of Sketchworks Architecture. Just wanted to greet everyone, thank you for your time this evening. As Mayor Satya Rhodes Conley said, I'm Julian from Eminent Development Corporation. What you'll see today is us submitting for rezoning of a property that we feel is being underutilized. We would like to place a senior affordable housing deal here. And so when we go through the presentation, you'll kind of see what our thoughts are. The reasoning for this rezoning is because we're not, it's not zoned correctly, and it isn't elaborated in the South Madison Plan as an accepted use as it currently stands. But we think that as you see our plans, being in the, being in this location, being right there on a busy street, badger road with public transit, and just some of the other things we're outlining in our presentation, that it's valid to raise for consideration of rezoning. So with that being said, I will let Ross run through the presentation, and I will be here for questions at any time.
I just ask you to pause for a minute. Do we have the presentation?
My understanding is that Ross requested that it be shared when he speaks.
He.
He re-registered right before the meeting started.
Okay, let me see if I can refresh here. Okay, but do we have the presentation? You do, okay, thank you. All right, so then our next registrant is Simon Hanna of Milton, Wisconsin, to be followed by Tommy Hanna, to be followed by Araciel Rivera. Do we have Simon? Let's see, Simon in the room. So we'll go on then to Tommy Hanna of District 7, to be followed by Araciel Rivera, to be followed by Claudia Castillo. Do we have Tommy?
Mayor, Mayor Simon is unmuted.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Simon.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing me to speak. My brother and I, Tommy, are currently the owners of the property at 77 Sirloin Strip. We have been trying to rezone and redevelop the property since COVID happened. This pandemic has put a strain on the restaurant, and we have been trying to rezone it and got previous approvals from the town of Madison on pretty much everything that we have submitted. However, they couldn't approve it because at the time it was also going into annexation into the city. During that time, we were told to go through the committees of the city, which we did, and then we were told to, again, go through the county because the city had no jurisdiction yet. So we have been being played like a ping pong ball going back and forth. This developer, Julian, is interested in purchasing the property, but that also depends on the rezoning. I think we all know that Madison needs the housing, and whether it's WIDA housing or whether it is regular rate housing, it is much needed. We have been told that there are certain height restrictions, which we changed, we have followed every, and we have followed every step that the councils have told us to do and resubmitted everything, and still we are met with adversity. So I'm not quite sure why they are declining the rezoning and not allowing us to move forward with our future as well. So we would like to see this rezoned, and we would like to see a development. It's not just going to help the Madison residents, but the immediate community. And from there, I guess I will let Julian take over.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tommy Hanna of District 7, to be followed by Araciel Rivera, to be followed by Claudia Castillo. Do we have Tommy? Go ahead.
Hello, thank you for having me. Just in, to reiterate, yes, the South Madison Plan shows that there is a plan there for up to a five-story unit, so it kind of also says that it should be rezoned. So just to clarify, that is what the town, what the South Side plan has in store for that piece of property. So I would just like to make sure that people understand that this is, was a restaurant for the longest time here in the town of Madison, now city, and it just definitely needs to get redeveloped. It is a development property that needs to be rezoned to be able to do that, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Araciel Rivera of South Shore Drive, to be followed by Claudia Castillo, to be followed by Kate Blood. Araciel? We have interpreters who should be unmuted as well. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Araciel quiere hablar antes de la reunión de la ciudad.
Sí, hola, buenas noches, buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por la oportunidad de nuevamente de participar para que tengan mi opinión. So sigo pensando que no estoy de acuerdo en la propuesta. Como persona, no puedo hablar mal de los dueños, pero lo quiero y pido que se me respeta el contrato. No es una mala decisión porque cuando yo renté, lo hicimos bajo acuerdos. Ellos siempre me han apoyado, y ahora que el negocio está reconocido y esperando, esperando y generando más empleos y seguir apoyando a la comunidad, y pido que me apoyen para seguir para adelante como aquellos que me brindaron la oportunidad de seguir en ese sueño como el restaurante del pollo rompieron, que ustedes me apoyaron en las oportunidades como de las licencias y ese aspecto. Sería todo.
Okay, as an interpreter, I am asking if you would like for us as interpreters to give a summary of what the other registers spoke or talked about before her?
If you could first translate what she said, and then I think at the end we'll come back around.
Okay, okay, so good afternoon, good evening to everybody. I am really thankful of the opportunity once again to be in front of you and give my thoughts and my opinions to you and to participate. I continue to think that I am not in agreement with this proposal. I do respect the people that is trying to do this, I do respect the contractors, I do respect everything that has been said and done, but I really would like to make a point of the fact that when I rented this space, we were under contract. We are under contract, and this was a dream of us, and you, the City of Madison, supported us to achieve this dream when we went to get the liquor license so far and so on. So now that the restaurant is making very good business, we continue to support the community, we continue to create employment, we continue to help the neighbors as much as we can. I am again requesting your support to continue supporting me and to be able to continue with my business.
Okay, gracias. I think if, with the permission of the body, can the interpreters give a summary of the each registrant as we go along? It's not what we usually do, but I think in this instance it's appropriate, not seeing any disagreement. So if one or both the interpreters would like to share what the first three speakers said, and then we'll go one by one after that.
Yeah, I think I can go ahead. Entonces, Julian, el representante de los constructores dijo que era necesario rezonificar esta zona porque este terreno está, nos está utilizando de manera adecuada y con la necesidad que tiene la ciudad de Madison para viviendas asequibles y también viviendas normales, precio de mercado, entonces es necesario plantear esta rezonificación y hay razones de peso para hacerlo. Según el, según el plan de la ciudad del, según el plan del sur de Madison, esta rezonificación sería un uso aceptable del terreno, ya que si van a esta calle pueden ver que hay un montón de transporte público y es una calle bastante transitada. Y Simon, que es uno de los propietarios del 77 de Sirloin Street, explicó como a la hora de estos los planes para construir en estas zonas han estado activos desde el COVID, porque fue una época muy mala para los, para los negocios, y de hecho tenían ya la, teníamos ya la aprobación de la ciudad del town of Madison, del pueblo de Madison, pero no se pudo completar porque era el proceso, estaba en el proceso de anexión de la ciudad de Madison, y después de ir a comités por la ciudad nos dijeron que teníamos que ir a hablar con el condado, porque todavía era parte del condado, y en el condado en ese proceso nos estaban yendo como una pelota de ping pong, nos estaban mandando de un lugar a Julian, el representante ha propuesto el comprar esta, esta zona y rezonificarlo, ya sea para utilizar vivienda a través de WIDA o de precio de mercado. Las restricciones de altura que se están haciendo son de cinco plantas, con lo cual sería parte de esta zona, esta rezonificación sería adecuada para esta zona, esas cinco plantas, y no ve ninguna razón por la que se decline esta rezonificación y seguir adelante con el, con el plan, y eso sería algo que ayudaría tanto a los residentes de la zona como a la comunidad que está alrededor de esta propiedad. Y Tommy, el otro, el otro propietario dijo que el plan de la ciudad de Madison muestra que eso, que se pueden construir hasta cinco alturas, y que el plan de la ciudad de Madison también dice, dice esto para esta propiedad, que este, este restaurante necesita ser remodelado y hacer una construcción nueva en este, en este sitio.
Okay, gracias. Our next registrant is Claudia Castillo of District 14, to be followed by Kate Blood, to be followed by Ross Trickle. Do we have Claudia? Claudia, ¿estás aquí? You may need to unmute yourself, there should be a prompt to unmute.
Hello?
Ah, aquí.
Yes. Buenas noches a todos. Como residente de esta comunidad, quiero expresar mi firme desacuerdo con la rezonificación propuesta. Este proyecto no solo es desproporcionado para nuestra zona, sino que también contradice las recomendaciones del plan del sur de Madison. Considerando, consideramos que sería más adecuado reducir la escala del proyecto, evitando construcciones más de tres pisos que no se ajustan al entorno ni a las necesidades locales. Nuestra comunidad de trabajadores, esta, una comunidad de trabajadores enfrentan retos socioeconómicos considerables, y tenemos que estar, tenemos que esta rezonificación agrava nuestra situación, colocándonos en una posición aún más vulnerable. Además, sentimos que nuestras voces no han sido totalmente escuchadas.
Claudia, ¿puedo traducirle?
Sí.
Okay. Thank you very much, good night to, good evening to everybody, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As a resident of this area of the city, I am in firm disagreement with the petition for rezonification of this area. This project has a size that is absolutely disproportionate with the other areas of the, of the community, and it doesn't fit the plans for the area that the South, the City of South Madison Commission has. The scale of the project is too big, large, there is no, three stories will be more than enough, we cannot allow to get five of them, and we, you need to understand that the community in this area is a community that has, is extremely vulnerable, vulnerable. Their vulnerability comes from challenges, financial, labor, and other, other type of challenges, and the fact that if the city approves the rezonification, those, we are going to become even more vulnerable, and that cannot be allowed. We also think that our voices have not been heard, we, our voices, again, we have not, have not been heard during this process, thus my disagreement for the zoning of this area.
Continúa.
Ah, sí, ya, continue.
Aunque hemos participado en reuniones con algunos de los líderes del proyecto, las últimas audiencias dejó la impresión de que la información presentada carecía de claridad, ya que los planes expuestos no reflejaban proyectos que realmente beneficiaran a nuestra comunidad. En resumen, insistimos como comunidad en que esta rezonificación debe reconsiderarse. Su actual enfoque no respeta las recomendaciones del plan de eso de Madison, y se aleja de las necesidades y aspiraciones reales de nuestra comunidad. Agrego que creo que... Y agrego que creo que mucho de lo que se contempla como facilidades para un edificio grande se entiende, pero no, nosotros que vivimos en esa área eh para personas de más de cincuenta y cinco años podría ser un desafío esa área. Por el hecho de que tenemos eh eh G.I.O., tenemos este muchos pendientes y no se ve un área segura. Te doy muchas gracias.
Okay. Um, we have participated as a community with some of the proponents and leadership for for this project and eh in the hearing, especially the last one, we think, oh, we thought that there was a lack of um information or that the information that they are presenting does not, is not clear because really what they were eh eh showing as it is now does not benefit the community eh as it is. I insist and we insist, me as a representative of my community, that resounding this area in the city is eh something that is not going to be helping or meeting the needs of the community and is going to be kind of putting us farther down from what we really need. Also, we are thinking that this is not a safe area because the eh the the designers, they are proposing eh residential units for people fifty-five and older seniors. And I think that this is an area of the city that is hilly, that it has a lot of hills, up and ups and downs, and that would become eh something of a safety issue for the people inhabiting these communities. Thank you very much.
Okay, gracias Claudia. Um, our next registrant is Kate Blood of District fourteen to be followed by Ross Trickle. Do you have Kate?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. So my name's Kate Blood and I'm a neighbor of uh the restaurant, which is what is being proposed to be taken down in order to build the the development. And I want to um applaud the developers for wanting to put affordable housing there. I think that's uh a laudable um goal to have. I, my first objection is that I don't think senior affordable housing is what's needed in this area. We're adjacent to Park Street, which has M A T C campus. We have services and businesses on Park Street. What we need is affordable workforce housing, not senior. The other thing I'd say is that currently in that spot which they want to demo is a wonderful restaurant. Um, it is a Colombian and Mexican restaurant. They've put a lot of work into remodeling this space and it is a wonderful community gathering space for uh both the people up there on the hill as well as all the rest of the neighbors in this area. And we would be very sorry to have that both the restaurant and what it provides is a community space uh taken out, especially for for senior housing, which is not really the need here.
Thank you. Uh, intérprete?
Sí. Hola, mi nombre es Kate Blood. Soy una vecina del restaurante, que es lo que se está prom- eh eh promoviendo para que se, para que se demuela, para el desarrollo de esta zona, para construir vivienda, vivienda asequible, que es algo que les aplaudo mucho esta decisión de querer hacer vivienda asequible. Sin embargo, el hecho de que sea vivienda asequible para personas mayores no parece que coincida muy bien con lo que es la zona porque aquí tenemos eh el Mad- Madison College, todos los negocios de Park Street que se pueden encontrar aquí. Lo que es necesario es vivienda asequible para la clase trabajadora eh y esta demolición también sería una cuestión, un problema esta demolición de un espacio que está resultando maravilloso, que es un lugar para que se reuna la la comunidad, este restaurante que mezcla eh la comida colombiana con la mexicana y que se ha convertido en un lugar de encuentro para toda la comunidad del vecindario y de toda esta zona y sería una gran pérdida el que se perdiera este restaurante ahora después de todo el esfuerzo que han hecho en la remodelación y la adaptación del restaurante.
Gracias. Our last registrant wishing to speak is Ross Trickle of Middleton. Do we have? Yes, go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your time. Um, so I, um, Workforce Sketchworks Architecture. Again, my name is Ross Trickle, uh working alongside Julian Walters on this development. Um, so as everybody kind of knows, we're proposing seventy-four units of affordable senior housing. The senior housing component of this is just one component that Julian felt was needed in the Madison community. So if the community going forward wishes to see more of a workforce housing aging uh of low income, he can certainly pivot to that. Um, so again, this is a rezone. It's not the the end-all of the final use for this building. Um, so we just want to make everybody a little bit more aware that uh we're, we're really trying to get affordable housing here, uh whether it does end up being um the the older senior people or uh workforce aged. If you go to the next slide, please. Again, um, aging building, uh you know, I I I totally hear everybody. It's it's a great community. Um, everybody loves what they've done with it so far. Um, but this sort of middle um of of the housing development here is is definitely um hurting and it's missing in this area. So um, I think it's very much worthy of of a redevelopment. Um, next slide, please. Again, there's, you know, we're not on a large um uh thoroughfare, if you will. Um, but again, walking distance to a few parks here. Uh, we've got Madison College that was previously mentioned as well. Um, so a lot of opportunity uh down the road, you know, not just five or ten years down the road, but twenty, thirty, forty years down the road. I think there's a lot of, lot of opportunity here. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, again, just kind of uh showing the the paths and and what is around this area currently. Uh, next slide, please. Um, again, eh, this is not a final design of the building. It's it's not about that. It's definitely only about the rezone and trying to bring in affordable housing. Um, Julian Walters is uh i- if you are or not aware, he's, we worked on a a project that is slated to be started construction here in a couple of months on Park Street, uh youth-centered housing, uh low income as well. So Julian has a heart for this. It's it's what he wants to try to help out with the city and this is just
Sorry, you have about fifteen seconds left.
Yeah, just the next step and and trying to help help the city that he's from and and has really uh helped bring him to be the the guy that he is now. And this is just to show that we have initial WIDA acceptance and just to say that
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So eh eh, este era el señor Ross Trickle. Él trabaja para Sketchwork, uno de los diseñadores de este proyecto. Ellos saben que están proponiendo como eh las diapositivas o filmadas lo muestran. Un proyecto de setenta y cuatro unidades de componentes de vivienda eh, vivienda que sea costable. Eh, Jul- Julian, una de los proponentes cree que esto es una gran necesidad eh del área. El hecho de que se proponga vivienda para individuos mayores de cincuenta y cinco años no quiere decir que esto es un absoluto. Creemos que hacer el enfoque sin que esta es una sola reunión o audiencia para considerar la eh rezonificación de esta área que en ninguna forma llama a un proyecto definitivo ni a un diseño definitivo. Obviamente, yo sé que podemos variar los diseños de los proyectos para poder incluir vivienda para jóvenes y poder incluir viviendas para personas jóvenes que trabajan eh eh del área. El el sitio donde está en este momento el restaurante entendemos, apreciamos que es un sitio donde la comunidad puede reunirse. Ha habido mucho trabajo por parte de los individuos que han desarrollado este eh local. El sitio donde está este el restaurante es un sitio que aunque no está en una área supera, super, super eh traficada de la ciudad, es un sitio que está cerca de muchas oportunidades como Madison College, como lo mencionaron antes, negocios, etcétera. Luego nosotros creemos que un proyecto de esta importancia puede traer una oportunidad increíble para el sector en los próximos veinte, treinta, cuarenta años. Eh, de nuevo, que está muy cerca a parques, tiene muy buenas eh rutas de bus, tiene muy buena accesibilidad a vías de bicicleta y vías eh de eh paracaminantes. De nuevo eh, esto es una una reun- una reunión para decidir posible rezonificación. Esto de ningún, en ninguna forma o momento eh habla de un proyecto definitivo.
Okay, gracias. Um, that is all the registrants we have wishing to speak. On item seventeen, are there questions for any of the registrants? Seeing none. Alder Knox?
Yeah, um, uh, speaking with Julian Walters.
We have Julian back, please.
I am here.
Hey, Julian, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sir, Alder Knox.
Yeah, um, you know, we we had a conversation about this project and first I guess I want to say that, you know, I'm really, um uh pleased and proud of you moving this uh project forward. You're one of our, you know, neighbor, community superstars. So I just want to state that um on the front end. I've known Julian pretty much um all of his life. Um, but we, we had a conversation about the project and and I certainly would be one to agree that we do have a need for senior affordable housing, all kinds of affordable housing. Um, so I encouraged you to move forward with the project. I actually like that it's a smaller-sized project. Most people know that I'm more concerned about
Oh, Alder, is there a question here?
Yeah, yeah, I'm getting to it if you give me a moment. And um, so that was some of the things that I liked about the project. But one of the things we talked about was what kind of feedback you were getting from the residents that surround the area, which is the the um mobile park residence as well as the um neighborhood surrounding that. So you know, I just wanted to know if you could give us a little feedback on how you, you know, outreach to that um to the community, uh residents surrounding the project.
Yes, sir. Um, we had a neighborhood meeting in which I spent um almost two hours uh with some stakeholders and community residents, I believe, January twenty-ninth. Um, you know, we worked through some people who have been working with this uh with with the community. I invited them, invited the restaurant owners as well to take part and just have a Q and A. Um, we didn't get too ahead of ourselves just because um we still knew we had an uphill battle. But we definitely had a conversation. A lot of the concern was um what it would do to, you know, utilities and things like that, how would the construction period affect the uh the mobile home park, things of that nature, um in which we kind of expressed at a high level um that process and how, you know, no utilities would be affected during construction, how we were heavily gated and and just kind of fundamental things about how developments happen um in neighborhoods that and and it doesn't affect um the people's direct living circumstances. Um, they talked about the uh restaurant as well. I spoke with the handlers um as well about the lease and I want to reiterate, this isn't a a a moving or a a building that's gonna disrupt the commercial tenant per se. Um, you know, we're looking for rezoning so we can have a plan and we're more than willing to work with the community and stakeholders on that plan. Um, you know, when you think about tax credit deals and things of that nature, those are a couple of years out anyways. So this isn't something that's an immediate threat to the commercial tenant right now either. Um, and those are things that we would have loved to have a discussion about um and work with them, um, you know, had they come to the meeting. And that's no fault of them. Um, there's no, that's no fault of us. It's just conversations that need to be had and we're more than willing to have it. Um, we think this is a great location for what we're trying to do, the size of it, um, the proximity of it to different services, the services that we will provide in the uni- uh in the actual project, um, both for the tenants and for the broader community. Um, there's a lot of things and details that we could go into about, but um, you know, honestly, we're, we're really trying to get a rezoning so we can do something and and redevelop this underutilized land. And we think and I know that we can do that without disrupting the current business of the of the of the restaurant, um, without affecting the community and also, you know, with more education and more meetings with the community, kind of let them know what the reality of the situation is. I think when you see a picture like this and you don't really know development, you, there's a lot of uh thoughts that come to mind. Um, that, you know, there just need to be conversations and answer questions on, but that would happen at a later date and we're, we're more than prepared to do that, you know, with translators and things like that, so people completely understand what this would do, the benefit for them, um, and and the and the broader community. Um, so that, that's, that's my answer, Alder Knox. I hope I answered it, but uh we, we definitely wanted to have more meetings with them as we got further along. As you guys know, this is a long process. Um, we're not going to be moving or displacing anyone for years to come and um we're just really trying to get uh a situation where we can work with the community but also work with these private owners who want to see something done with their land and kind of move forward with their lives as well. Um, we kind of restructured our proposal and our and our project based off what they presented before. We downsized the density, uh made it affordable to 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 correlate with the natural affordability of the mobile park. Um, and then like, you know, just being a South Madison guy who who does things for the community, it's always been a location I was familiar with. Friends growing up in the mobile park when I went to Lincoln, it it it, I just feel like there's something we can do there that could be uh a great benefit for everyone involved with time, with education and with collaboration with the community.
So my only other question
Alder, I'm gonna pause you and let the interpreter um summarize that.
Sí, la, la pregunta del concejal Knox a Julian fue básicamente si podía dar algo de eh hacer un resumen de los comentarios que habían escuchado de los residentes del parque de casas móviles en la zona y la respuesta de Julian ha sido que sí, que tuvieron una, tuvimos una reunión de dos horas con la comunidad el diecinueve de enero en el que estuvimos trabajando con ello y también se invitó a las personas del restaurante que no pudieron asistir. La principal preocupación que mostraron los residentes era sobre los servicios públicos, el agua, la electricidad. Si iba a haber algún tipo de problemas durante la construcción y se les explicó el proceso de cómo funciona todo el proceso de la construcción y que no iba a haber, no se iba a afectar en gran medida nada en ese sentido. Eh, también hablamos en la fase de desarrollo con los propietarios, los Hannah, y hablamos también sobre los los contratos y estábamos, cómo estábamos pensando, la voluntad que teníamos de trabajar con la comunidad y de todas maneras, una vez que se apruebe este proyecto todavía todos estos eh los acuerdos en terno a los incentivos fiscales todavía van a tardar como dos años en hacerse, entonces puede replantear y remodificar los los planteamientos que tenemos. Nos hubiera gustado hablar con el restaurante en su momento. Es una, es una ubicación perfecta y también entendemos todo el servicio que ahora están ofreciendo tanto eh tenemos que el, este edificio quedaría unos grandes servicios tanto a los inquilinos del propio edificio como a toda la comunidad alrededor. Eh, pensamos que lo podemos hacer este proyecto sin hace que sea un gran trastorno ni para el para el restaurante, para el negocio del restaurante y siempre nos gustaría tener muchas más reuniones y conversaciones más profundas eh con todas las partes implicadas y tener a los intérpretes presente para que todo el mundo pueda entender y aportar sus ideas. A este proceso es un proceso a largo plazo. La idea es que nadie tenga que mudarse ni que se sienta expulsado de la zona y queremos trabajar tanto con la comunidad como con los propietarios y lo mismo que hemos hecho a la hora de reestructurar el plan tanto en tamaño como en hacerlo vivienda asequible para poder cumplir con todas las necesidades de la zona y poder ofrecer algo que beneficie a todas las partes. a todas las partes interesadas.
Gracias, Julio. Alder Knox, another question?
Yeah, yeah, I guess as I went through the staff reporting, also had a brief discussion with you, Julian. Hold on a second, getting a little, all right. One of my questions were, it seemed to be that there were, from looking at the staff report, a lot of conditional use issues. So could you comment on how you feel about your project in terms of addressing those various conditional use issues, and maybe just kind of let us know where you landed from?
Yeah, so we would need a conditional use for the demo, and then the conditional use for the seventy-five, I mean, for seventy-four units, with that being out of the current plan. And so, you know, the rezoning of allowing this to TRU, to TRU one, would kind of help aid a seamless approval for conditional use of that amount, because that's warranted within the, that would be warranted within the rezone. And so those are kind of the auxiliary things that came with the actual rezoning application that are kind of being tabled till after we see what the verdicts, some of the plans, and so that's how I answer that question. There's other things that we don't, yeah, that's my answer.
Mr. Knox estaba preguntando o dijo que él vio en un reporte que había gran cantidad de preguntas y dudas, y había gran cantidad de referencias a condicionales del uso de la propiedad. Por lo cual, entonces Julian contesta que sí, que él entiende que obviamente había condicionales para el uso de la propiedad cuando había un demo, una maqueta de setenta y cinco, con un programa para construir setenta y cuatro unidades, pero que obviamente todos estos usos condicionales van a estar sujetos también a la propuesta de rezonificación de esta área para la construcción. Y todo esto, si se aprueba la rezonificación y se hace, obviamente estos están listos para poder discutir todos los usos condicionales. Esta fue la respuesta.
Gracias, Adriana. Alder Knox, any additional questions?
No.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Alder Field questions?
Yep, for Julian.
Go ahead.
Thanks for joining us tonight, Julian. From the discussion at the Plan Commission meeting on Monday last week, I remember some details or willingness on your all's part to look at the possibility of a storm shelter in your property for residents nearby. Can you talk a little bit about whether you've discussed that with the nearby residents? And then, second, if you've had a chance to talk to city staff about what it would entail to add that to your project and request the necessary approvals to put that in the proposal?
Julian?
Yes, yes. Yes, good evening, Alder Fields. We did have those conversations at the neighborhood meeting. We have talked to some city staff about what that possibility would look like. You know, as some of you may know and are familiar with the process, you know, there's designs and different committees that have to approve certain things, and that could very much well be a part of it. As it stands, when we proposed what we proposed, and, you know, with our project, it wasn't in the plans after meeting with the community and kind of seeing the plan for that. You know, that's definitely something that we would have broader discussions with. Like I said, this is something that is a couple of years out, but getting this rezoning will be essential in allowing us to actually move forward with those types of plans and really hone in a design that everybody can be happy about, and that could be a great public benefit for and with. Right now, that's kind of what we're pushing for. And again, you know, different designs and added things to it, discussing with the city, working with the city, working with the community to see what amenities we can offer, is definitely a part of our plan, and hence why it's so essential and critical for us to get this rezoning so we can begin our planning process for something that's probably not going to happen for another couple of years.
Nothing further, thank you.
Sí, entonces tuvimos la pregunta del concejal, fue si había habido una discusión sobre que el lunes habló en el plan de la comisión, una discusión sobre un refugio para tormentas, un refugio para tornados, si había tenido algún tipo de conversación tanto con los residentes de la zona circundante como con el personal de la ciudad. Y sí, Julian, confirmo que ha habido conversaciones sobre esto, y también hubo algunas aprobaciones para la propuesta, esto sería que para un plan más a futuro. Los diseños que se han hecho no son completos, y que habría que hablar con muchos comités diferentes dentro de la ciudad para conseguir todos los permisos o definir cómo sería este proceso. En un principio no estaba en el plan que presentamos, pero es algo que podemos seguir teniendo estas conversaciones y poder ampliar incluso un poco más esta discusión, porque la primero sería este paso de rezonificación, para después podemos entablar estos, estas ideas, para ver qué planteamientos diferentes se pueden aportar, y en esos dos años, que sería por lo menos todo este proceso, nos gustaría poder hablar tanto con la ciudad como con toda la comunidad circundante, para poder pasar de esta, primero esta fase de rezonificación, y después ya una planeación más directa del plan para esta zona.
Gracias. Are there any other questions for registrants on item seventeen? If not, then I would just ask our interpreters to let Aracely and Claudia know that we are moving on to a different item for public comment, and after that, we would come back to discuss item seventeen.
La, es, la alcalde preguntó si había más personas que han sido registradas para hablar o comentar con respecto a esta proposición. Al no haber otros individuos que quieran participar, les quiere hacer saber que a Aracely y a Claudia, que vamos a movernos a discutir otros artículos en la agenda, y que al final de la discusión de estos otros artículos, se volverá a la discusión de este asunto.
Gracias. All right, then we'll move on to a public comment on item twenty, which is creating sections of the Madison general ordinances to change the zoning of property at sixty-three oh three Portage Road and forty-eight twenty-one Hepka Road, from temporary agricultural to agricultural, and creating additional sections, changing the zonies of property at sixty-three oh three Portage Road and forty-eight twenty-one Hepka Road, from temporary agricultural to TRP, traditional residential planned district in District Seventeen. On item twenty, we have two registrants wishing to speak. Joanne Rubio from Aventura, Florida, to be followed by Brian Randall. Do we have Joanne?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity as the applicant to verbalize how the Leo development is compatible with the Pumpkin Hollow Neighborhood Development Plan. And because I'm short on time, can we just move to slide nine, please? Thank you. Aside from providing units suitable for varying households, the proximity to the Portage-Hopka Activity Center furthers the desire for a mix of land uses within the boundary of our proposed parcels that we're purchasing. The Leo development provides an interconnected network of public and private roads connecting the existing rights of ways. This development provides a seamless transition between the Pumpkin Hollow Neighborhood and large employment center to the south and southeast. Next slide. Additionally, a strong street orientation to the public roads is proposed, creating a more engaging street environment and promoting natural surveillance. Street trees proposed within the rights of ways will create cohesion within the public and private street network. And the scale and mass of the proposed development will shield proposed public rights of ways from parking. Lastly, the intentional randomness used in our design creates an illusion of an established neighborhood versus a cookie cutter subdivision providing architectural character. Next slide. And the last item that I wanted to cover is the Stark Weather Creek. Our staff report states that this area should be considered as an environmental corridor. And I want to state for the record that DNR and CARPAC does currently not establish or consider this an environmental corridor. And the recommendations of the Neighborhood Development Plan are limited to the navigable portions of the stream to the west of Portage Road, and also the southern portion of the stream. The Leo development, as you can see on this map, is located east of Portage. The intermittent stream is not considered a wetland, and we have documentation from our third-party consultants, and it is also not a navigable body of water. Again, like I said, the Neighborhood Development Plan specifically speaks to navigable portions of the stream. And lastly, as I mentioned, DNR does not classify the Stark Weather Creek as an environmental corridor.
About twenty seconds left.
I'm done, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Our next registrant is Brian Randall of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, representing Avenue Azora. Do we have Brian?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the common council. This is Brian Randall. I'm a land use and zoning attorney based in Milwaukee, and I've been working with Avenue Azura on all of the Wisconsin sites. I'll be very brief, because Joanne did cover all of the talking points we had discussed. But first, certainly want to acknowledge this is a challenging site and a very interesting area of the city, and we do appreciate having worked with staff and Alder Madison throughout, and we do hope that the council takes a hard look at what we're proposing and maybe find a way to move this forward. To correct one thing that Joanne said, I think she may have just said that our Leo site is to the east of Portage Road, and as you can see on the graphic before you, it is to the west of Portage Road. The Pumpkin Hollow Neighborhood Plan from two thousand eight really talks about Stark Weather Creek to the east of Portage Road, and even though we're showing it as a dotted blue line on the graphic that you can see, it is nothing more than an intermittent stream. It's not a navigable waterway. It is not a permanent surface water feature, but we certainly did want to show where it would be with that dotted line, and we are west of Portage Road. The final thing I'll just share with you is that while we're not there yet with this proposal, when we do have site details, we will greatly enhance the natural features. There will be pocket parks, an interconnected neighborhood streetscape, and of course, onsite stormwater management. So what may be there today will really be outshined by what we propose, not only a housing development and some missing middle market housing that the city, I know, needs, but also greatly enhancing the natural landscape and green space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are the registrants we have wishing to speak on item twenty. Are there questions for either of the registrants? Seeing none, thank you, and we'll go on then to item thirty-five, adopting the Salt Creek Corridor Plan. We have two registrants wishing to speak. First registrant is Faith Fitzpatrick of District Nineteen, to be followed by Louis Cornelius. Do we have Faith?
Yes, I'm over here.
Come on over.
Uh, you want me?
Come to one of the microphones, please. You can pick your side.
Hi, I'm Faith Fitzpatrick. I'm a PhD, a professional hydrologist and professional geologist. I've presented comments previously in written form for the Board of Public Works, and I'm opposed to the Salt Creek Corridor Plan. Just briefly tonight, I'll try to paraphrase things. The current plan, it's expensive, it unnecessarily disturbs canopy floodplain forest and soils, and it doesn't fix the erosion and channel stability problems, which were caused by the channel reacting to past unmaintained and poorly placed stormwater and in-channel infrastructure. Conceptual plans such as these should show how these problems will be alleviated relative to ongoing geomorphic and vegetation responses in the combined channel floodplain and overbank areas, under the current and projected hydrologic variability. The plan should focus on how this floodplain forest fluvial system can be used to slow, filter, and cool stormwater to meet the total maximum daily loads and the total suspended solids standards. I provided more background. There was a question about this being some of the alternative techniques that I suggested being researched. They're not, they're tools that are available to cities and counties and government agencies that are responsible for stormwater in urban areas. And so I provided those, and I'd be glad to answer any questions on the kind of science side or the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant on this item is Louis Cornelius of District Nine. I see we have one phone number online. I don't know if that's them. If that is you on the phone, you should be able to unmute yourself, I believe it's star If not, then we'll go on to questions. Are there any questions for the registrant on item thirty-five? Alder, are you there?
Yes, Dr. Fitzpatrick, please.
Yes, Alder.
Yes, doctor. At the Board of Public Works, there was some commentary from staff, and I'm sure we'll get some more clarification on this, about the plan as presented being the starting point of a more detailed process. And my note from that meeting is just the observation that the staff seem to have a fairly large respect for your contributions and your knowledge. And I heard in that an offer that they thought that as they worked into the details, some of your suggestions and the tools that you were describing might be valid in some of the subareas, and they were interested in seeking your involvement in that more detailed process. Would that be a comfortable thing for you to do if it goes in that direction?
Definitely, I would be glad to help, and I've also offered that situations like this in other places have had a technical advisory team, so it might not just be one person's and one person's view for that, so I would be very glad to do that. But again, you know, the other thing with the conceptual plans, as it currently is, it's very focused on bank erosion protection. And so in my understanding and looking at other conceptual plans like this, you want to have those other elements in the conceptual plan so that they can be further integrated into that. Sometimes it's very difficult to add that later, but you get kind of going on one thing and time and everything else, you know, then kind of takes over.
Sure. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions, so we'll go on then to, you can sit down again, thank you, sorry. So we'll go on to item fifty-six. Oh, I'm sorry, on item fifty-six, the registrant has, I believe, no, on item fifty-six, we have one registrant wishing to speak. On item 56, we have one registrant wishing to speak, Nicholas Davies of District 15. Item 56 is amending or appealing various sections of Chapters 8, 10, and 33 of the Madison General Ordinances related to the reorganization of city boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have Nicholas?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. The portion of this item that's concerning for me is abolishing the Public Safety Review Committee. The PSRC is our policymaking body for issues of policing and fire response, and this committee also has budgetary review authority over our most expensive department in city government, and which is also our most heavily armed. In the coming years, our city will be presented with unprecedented policy questions. For example, if a Madisonian were targeted for warrantless, chargeless abduction and cross-country human trafficking, if this Madisonian were targeted in this way because of their exercise of free speech, what role would Madison Police play in response? Would they assist in that unconstitutional arrest or interrupt it? I'm proud of Madison's sanctuary city status, but how it's applied is a policy question. As our national government slides into lawlessness and fascism, it is essential that our first responders be accountable to city residents and responsive to our changing needs. If you feel that PSRC should take on more business, I absolutely agree, but this is not the time to dissolve our only policymaking committee that we have for police and fire departments. Thanks.
Thank you. And before we let you go, Nicholas, can you just confirm that you no longer wish to speak on item 78?
That's correct. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant on item 56? Seeing none, then thank you, and we'll move on to item 76, which is approving the preliminary plat of the Leo living on property addressed as 6303 Portage Road and 4821 Hepka Road in District 17. On item 76, we have two registrants wishing to speak. Brian Randall of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, representing Advenira Zora, and Joanne Rubio. Brian, did you wish to speak on this item as well?
No, nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne, did you have anything further on this item?
I do not.
Thank you both. Any additional questions for either of them? Seeing none, then on item 77, the substitute amending the report of the Lamp House Block Ad hoc Planning Committee. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Bruce Bosman of District 12. Do we have Bruce?
Well, it's been probably 35 years since the first time I've talked to this body. The faces have changed a lot. I started in business in '86, and my company, Apex Properties, we provide housing to about 3,000 people in Madison, and about 75% of them are affordable to people making median income. And we have owned the Lamp House and the adjacent houses on Mifflin Street for over 20 years, and we have put forth various proposals to redevelop the Mifflin Street properties, but have been rebuffed by city staff. I know that I could push to try to go against what staff recommends, but I've been doing this long enough to know that there's no point in that. So probably three years ago, this body voted to not reduce the zoning height limit of the properties that look out from the Lamp House. Yet, the staff maintains that I can't do a development that would block the view because the plan's recommendations are still in effect. So my request is that you reconcile the zoning and the plan. It seems like the zoning was fairly definitively decided, I believe it was 14 to 4, to keep six-story zoning, so I'd like to see the plan reflect that. I understand that there's reluctance to modify the recommendations of the ad hoc committee. I respect that. I appreciate that. I'm not asking for you to change their plan. I'm asking for you to change the adopted recommendations from the plan. They can recommend stuff. You don't have to abide by all the recommendations, and in fact, you didn't. So please reconcile the recommendations adopted with the current zoning so that we can provide a meaningful housing development.
Thank you. Bruce is the only registrant wishing to speak on this item. Are there any questions? Alder Bennett.
Thanks for coming, Bruce. Just a few questions. Could you expand upon discussions with staff after the council meeting in 2021, which created this conflict?
Yeah, it seemed very clear that they understood that this was zoned for six stories, but a six-story development would block the views from the house looking north. So therefore, they said that they could not support a six-story development for that reason. And I understand their position. I don't hold it against them. I think that they're reasonable people doing their job according to their job descriptions. That's why I think it's up to this body to clarify what is the actual entitlement to build on that. Is it the zoning, or is it the view?
Right. And I understand it that it's not just your property that's impacted by this report, right? By your count, there were several hundred properties that would be impacted by this report, right? How many?
At the time that the report's recommendations were adopted, it was stated in this council that it affected 437 parcels. I don't know that... I have no means of verifying that, but that was the number that was bandied about at the time. And it also reminds me of something that I found sort of amusing at the time, was that the preservation planner who was active in that role in those days, this is in 2013 or 2014, testified here that there are only two other properties that have views that, looking out from a property, that are protected by ordinance statute, whatever other means in the United States, only two, Monticello and Mount Vernon. And the third is the Robert Lamp House. And I find there to be sort of a preposterousness to that because we own four other national landmark houses in Madison, and I'm told I own more properties in the historic districts than anyone else in town. And we have spent probably, at last count, around $12 million rehabbing properties in the historic districts. I'm not a person that likes to tear stuff down. Over the last six years, I have done four substantial developments, and we've added about 500 units to Madison housing stock. But my career has been rehabbing old houses. I mean, literally, we've rehabbed about 100. And I don't take it lightly, the idea of tearing something down. But there is a point at which certain properties run their course. The Lamp House is not a property that I'm interested in tearing down. I've spent a great deal of time collaborating with the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy to come up with a plan that they agree with, they approve of, that would integrate the Lamp House into a larger development where that house would be used as a component part of the development. As opposed to now, its only use that we've had in our 20 years in owning it is as a student rental, and it's just not a sustainable condition to rent that house to a group of students. So, sorry, Juliana, I'm afraid I've lost track of your question on my little rant there.
You kind of got into my... One of my last questions was like, you know, just talking about your conversations with the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy, and it seemed like from those conversations, based on what you shared in like the plan commission meeting, they were supportive of a redevelopment that would provide a new, more sustainable use than its current use as like a student housing development, which loves students, but they're also kind of hard on a historic property.
Yeah. Yeah, the Conservancy commissioned a study by ISMS architects here in town and had a lengthy site visit and a condition assessment, and they concluded that we have been good stewards of this house. Their report was very favorable. But they said that they do recognize that the state of affairs is not sustainable. It is only through sort of... These are not their words, but I can't think of a better one. Heroic efforts, sort of breaking out of the system, that we're able to maintain this house despite the wear and tear that it gets. And the conclusion that has been reached amongst preservation folk is that a historic resource needs to have one of two means of continuing, of persisting into the modern world, and that is, it's either significant enough that people will pay money to come and tour it, or you come up with an adaptive reuse to bring it into modern times and have it have a meaningful purpose in its use. And the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy has concluded that they will support us redeveloping in front of it, in north of it, only if it is an integral part of a larger development, that maintaining it is intrinsic to the maintenance of the larger functioning development. So that is the resolution that we have come to with them, and I believe that they have opined that they nevertheless advocate for maintaining things such as light and air and whatnot, but they say that they feel that our proposal that we have worked together on is something that they will support.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hang out because Alder Rumel has questions. Alder Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Bruce. I'm on the screen. Thank you for the work you, you know, that it takes to own all these historic buildings. You know, I'm a big fan of taking care of properties, and I appreciate the work that you and your company does. When I've been thinking about this change, you know, I think one of the questions that's a problem for you is the view sheds and how that affects any proposal that you might come up with. And I'm wondering, and I won't go into the deep levels of thinking I have about view sheds, I'll spare you all, but I'm wondering if you would consider, if you did come through with a development proposal, whether you would grant a public easement to the driveway on North Butler Street as one way to make sure there is public access to this historic resource?
It's not a question that I've considered up until this very moment, and I don't see any reason why I couldn't do that, but I can't commit to it on the fly.
Well, no, I'm not asking you to do that.
It seems reasonable. It seems like a reasonable idea.
Because it seems to me, and I'm now just sort of giving my opinion, the view in is something we have more control of than the views out, so it might be something that if and when you come through with a proposal, that would be considered a part of your proposal. So thank you for answering or considering, and keep thinking about it. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Valid point.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions, so thank you, Bruce.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I believe that brings us to the end of our public comment, and just making sure, yes. Okay. And so then our next item is item 4, which is Legisstar 87447, Presentation by the Government Affairs Team, A Briefing on State Legislative Affairs. Unfortunately, the Welsh group had an unavoidable conflict tonight, and so the request is to refer this item to our next council meeting. President Figaro.
Moved to refer.
Moved and seconded to refer to the 325 council meeting. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded, and we will hear from them next time. And then we will go on to item 17, which is Legisstar 86990, Creating Sections of the Madison General Ordinances to Change the Zoning of Property Located at 77 Surloin Strip in District 14. And I will just alert our interpreters that we are back onto this item, and I believe we will start with a staff presentation from Director Tuttle.
Thank you, Mayor. The item that is before the council this evening is a request to rezone 77 Surloin Strip from the existing zoning of traditional residential varied 2 to traditional residential urban 1. The reason for this request is associated with an application for redevelopment at the site, both to demolish the existing commercial building, the home of a restaurant presently, and to consider the approval of a multi-unit, four-story, multi-unit building containing 74 units. The item that is before the council tonight is just the rezoning. This is the one piece of this collective request that the council has final action on, and was referred to it by the Plan Commission after their last meeting. The important thing for us to look through when we consider this rezoning request is the relationship to the South Madison Plan recommendations. This is one of the pieces of the Plan Commission's recommendation that has the most nuance for the Council to consider tonight. The site that is identified in the red circle on the map on the right side of the screen was included in the South Madison Plan in an area that was recommended for low, medium residential uses. This residential category can generally be considered to be that sort of missing middle that we often talk about, the scale between smaller sort of single-family homes and larger multifamily buildings, and is generally recommended for an overall height of between one to three stories. The South Madison Plan did recommend, though, a maximum of five stories for this site, and you can see for other sites along Badger Road and the Belt Line, but with very specific recommendations as to how that height should be considered on those sites. Specifically, that that five-story height should be measured from the southeast corner of the property because there is a rock outcropping and a significant drop in the grade of the property at the southeast corner of the site. So the recommendation was that that five-story maximum should be measured from that lowest point on the property so as to ensure that the portion of the development that is on top of the rock outcropping and closer to the surrounding residential communities would not be... That the proposed development would not tower over the adjacent mobile home park. When the properties were attached from the Town of Madison, the property was recommended in our plan and ultimately proactively zoned.
Megan, I'm sorry. Can you pause so the interpreter can?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, if we can just interpret the slide by slide, I think that will work great for us.
Okay, great.
So can you go back to the slides? We all have the reference? Yeah, thank you so much. Entonces, el proyecto que tenemos hoy es este proyecto de 74 unidades que se presentan. Nosotros es hoy lo que vamos a hablar es únicamente de la rezonificación, y el punto más importante es la referencia que hay en... Fue referido este asunto para nosotros por la comisión de planeación, y el punto más importante en este respecto es su relación con las recomendaciones del plan del sur de Madison, y ahí es donde hay que tener mayor cuidado con los detalles de todo el proyecto. En esta zona ha sido recomendada para uso residencial de baja y media densidad, que suele referirse a ello como esa zona intermedia entre lo que serían viviendas unifamiliares y bloques de apartamento. y bloques de apartamentos. Entonces, la recomendación para esta zona sería como de una a tres alturas, con un máximo de cinco alturas sobre este terreno en concreto, que es el que ven ahí en el en el círculo rojo, lo que sí que hay, la recomendación es que la medida de estas cinco alturas se empieza a medir desde la parte más baja de la propiedad, porque en esta propiedad hay una gran roca, entonces esas cinco alturas deberían medirse desde esa zona baja de la propiedad, que está en la esquina sureste de la de la propiedad y donde hay una gran caída en la en la altura de todo de todo este terreno. Y es la zona para que no se creen una una gran altura, que se oculte o tape completamente la comunidad residencial que rodea este 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 terreno.
When the property was brought into the city of Madison, from the Town of Madison, it was proactively rezoned to TRV2, which presently allows for up to a three-story height for development on the property. The requested rezoning to TRU1 would allow for up to five stories at the, measured from the top of the rock outcropping. The related conditional use application, the development proposal that you heard earlier Julian and others speak about, currently indicates a four-story, 74-unit building, which under our codes would be considered a large multifamily building. In order to consider a large multifamily building in areas of the city that are recommended for low and medium residential, the Plan Commission has to consider the specific locations of the property and look at select conditions related to things like the proposed buildings and their surroundings, natural features, lot and block characteristics, and access to a range of services to support the development. I'll pause there for interpretation.
Thank you. So since this property was brought from the Town of Madison to the
En español, si?
I'm sorry, perdón. Desde que la propiedad fue transferida del pueblo de Madison a la ciudad de Madison, esta propiedad fue clasificada, como ya todos lo sabemos, como una una zona TRB2, que permite edificaciones entre dos y tres pisos. La petición que está frente de nosotros en la noche del día de hoy es que nosotros reconsideremos a una rezonificación TRB1, lo que permite a construir hasta cinco pisos. Y eso tiene que ver con las condiciones relacionadas dentro de el proyecto, que hablan de cuatro pisos, 74 unidades de departamentos. Esto en nuestros códigos o en nuestros cánones está clasificado con un edificio grande multifamiliar y obviamente en área de mediana a baja densidad de construcción, que tiene que ser nosotros considerando específicos como qué elementos o hechos naturales hay alrededor, qué áreas comerciales están disponibles, cuál es el tipo de edificios que se están considerando, etcétera.
In both the staff report and the Plan Commission's discussion of this requested rezoning, the primary condition related to requesting this large multifamily building approval in low, medium residential had to do with the height of the of the proposed building and ultimately the zoning district that was requested to approve it. The Plan Commission recommended that the rezoning request be placed on file without prejudice in consideration of those select conditions and specifically because it could not find the height to be consistent with the specific height recommendations for this site in the South Madison Plan.
Sí, entonces la condición primaria para la aprobación que se planteó ante la comisión de planeación era la altura del edificio y la comisión decidió poner, recomendó archivar esta solicitud sin perjuicio en base a estas alturas porque no se ajustaban a estas, a las alturas del plan en esta zona.
And I should add here that this is primarily because the perceived view, the perceived mass of the proposed project from that southeast corner would read more like a six-story building than what was recommended in the plan at five stories from that location.
Sí, me gustaría añadir que esta es la masa primordial de todo el proyecto, si se pone desde esa zona, de la zona sureste de la zona, sería más como un edificio de seis alturas.
So again, as noted, the applicant requested three separate approvals as part of this project. The demolition, which is the Plan Commission's final recommendation, the rezoning, which the Plan Commission has offered a recommendation to this body and this body has the final decision on, and the approval of a conditional use, which is a an approval that the Plan Commission would be the final decision on. The Plan Commission, go ahead.
So el aplicante, lo que ha pedido es aprobaciones para tres asuntos por separado. La primera, el primer asunto es la demolición de el edificio comercial que existe. La comisión de planeación ya tomó una decisión con respecto a esto. La segunda es el rezonificar de TRB2 a TRU1. La comisión de planeación recomendó al cuerpo que está discutiendo esto en la noche del día de hoy, y nosotros como Consejo de la Ciudad tenemos la toma de la decisión final. Y un tercer asunto es la aprobación de un uso condicional, que también va a ser una decisión final de la comisión de planeación.
Again, the Plan Commission recommended that the rezoning request be placed on file without prejudice and referred that recommendation to you all. The Plan Commission also referred the application for demolition and conditional use to its next meeting pending your decision tonight on the rezoning request. There was a recognition that if the rezoning were to be approved tonight, the Plan Commission could resume its discussion of the demolition and conditional use applications it has, but that if the rezoning ultimately were not approved, the conditional use application, as it has been submitted to the Plan Commission at this time, would not be able to be approved.
El plan de, la comisión de planeación recomendó, con un voto de tres a cinco, una petición de rezonificación con esta identificación que, y lo puso, lo archivó sin perjuicio. Este es el único asunto a discutir y decidir hoy, esta noche. La, en la comisión de planeación refirió los asuntos de uso condicional y de demolición a su discusión, que va a tener lugar el día marzo 17, obviamente pendiente a la acción del Consejo con respecto a la petición de rezonificación. Se reconoce que estos dos no se van a revisar si la comisión de planeación opta por referir para aconsejamiento su recomendación.
I'll note that in the Plan Commission's discussion of these three requests, there was recognition that there have been project features that have been discussed in the public comment and in the comments by the applicants that are not currently reflected in the plans that have been submitted for the Plan Commission's consideration. It's notable because in some cases, some of the things that we have heard represented as potential amenities or features of this project may not be approvable under the requested zoning district that is in front of us right now. So while that's not really the question in front of the council and was not the question in front of the Plan Commission, it was noted because of that inconsistency. And the last point that I'll just note, because it's come up a couple of times, is that if the rezoning were approved, the Plan Commission could consider the conditional use application as it was submitted already without any modifications and could, if it finds the standards all to be met, could approve it.
Sí, el plan de la, la comisión de planificación hizo un reconocimiento de que algunas de las características del proyecto, según se habían presentado en, a nivel público, no se reflejaban en el en el plan. Una cosa que hay que tener en consideración, aunque no sea parte exacta de lo que se va a discutir aquí hoy, que algunas de las características del edificio que se han discutido no podrían ser aprobables, no se podrían aprobar bajo este estatuto de rezonificación. Y el último punto que me gustaría hacer es que una vez que se apruebe esta rezonificación, el uso condicional quedaría para la, la comisión de planeación para que ellos pudieran decidir o dejarlo tal cual está ese uso condicional una vez que se apruebe aquí en el Consejo del Común la la rezonificación.
I'll stop there and happy to answer other questions.
So we'll do questions for staff next. And I think maybe what I'll do is ask that we take those questions without interpretation and then perhaps Megan could summarize the main points for the interpreter to then share so that we can proceed a little expeditiously. Alder Evers, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. This question can go to either Megan Tuttle or Jim O'Keefe. How many projects has this developer, eminent Development Corporation, completed in the city?
Okay, Alder Evers asked how many projects eminent Development has completed in the city. And I'm looking to Director of Community Development, Jim O'Keefe. I believe that we are currently working with the applicant on one other project, which has not yet been completed.
Has, how many projects have been started or have we broken ground on so far with this developer? And is this developer a first-time developer in this city? What's the history with this developer?
Megan?
Alder Evers, I'm aware only of the of the proposed development, which is slated to take place at 1150 South Park, location we used to refer to as 1202 South Park. That's a development proposal that we are partnering with eminent Development on. It's been a while in bringing it together, and I think you heard the development team earlier tonight indicate that they are a couple of months away perhaps from breaking ground on that. That's the only project that that the city's been involved with this developer.
We can pause for interpretation here.
I think, again, if we if we can just take the all the questions and then Megan, if you can just summarize the the points, the answers at the end.
Second, second question. And I think this might go to Jim O'Keefe. Is is this proposed site within, there was reference to affordable senior housing and then perhaps if it could be flexible, it could be affordable of a different sort. Regarding the city's affordable housing targeted area map, does this particular parcel fall within a preferred area that we've so far identified for affordable housing?
So Alder, the the request for proposals document that we will release later this year in 2025, is itself still under construction? I do not anticipate that there will be significant, if any, changes to the to the map that directs developers to where we like to see development occur. So under the current iteration of that map, this site would be ineligible, but not in a preferred area. And based on past history, we have had occasion to entertain requests or make rewards, awards to requests that were not in preferred areas because typically the the stronger proposals and those that get funded are indeed located in preferred areas. I think one other point is is relevant. I know that there's there's a little bit of uncertainty about this developer's intent with respect to low-income housing tax credits. More, not so much a matter of whether that will be part of the financing scheme, but the timing of those credits or that tax credit application. If a developer comes to the Affordable Housing Fund application process with tax credits in hand and is proposing a development in a location that is not in a preferred area, that application would not be eligible for assistance under the Affordable Housing Fund in its current iteration, and I do not expect that that will change either.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, then Megan, would you just summarize the answers for the interpreters, please?
Yes.
Director, I'm sorry, Alder Rumel has a question. Alder Rumel?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I mean, it just sounds like everything this this proposer wants is not possible. Is there anything staff could recommend that, you know, could be done? I mean, different zoning, fewer stories, I mean, just sort of what's 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 an alternative that's a doable choice in your opinions?
Thank you, Alder Rumel. I can't speak to all of the conversations that the development review staff may have had with these applicants before this current request came before the Plan Commission. But I do think that based on the plan recommendations, evaluating the overall height of the building to make it more compatible with the plan recommendations, specifically about the height being measured from the southeast corner of the property, is probably the number one piece of this project from the Plan Commission's perspective. I would also recommend that if the applicant does intend to include other aspects of the project that may not include just amenity space for the residential uses, that revised plans be submitted that clarify what those features are to ensure that the proposed zoning is compatible with the intent of the project.
Mayor Mia, I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Is the TRU1 zoning like the best zoning in your view? Are there other options to consider?
In the current zoning district, a project of up to three stories and 45 units could be developed at this site. Ultimately, the recommendations for, or or the requests to rezone properties come a little bit from how we interpret how to apply the plan recommendations and what the applicants are ultimately hoping to achieve on a site. But I would note that the current zoning would allow for a project of three stories and up to 45 units.
Thank you, Director Tuttle.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. How old is this plan?
The plan is from 2022.
So a couple years old. And when we were doing outreach to complete the, to close up the plan, was this particular community engaged in any significant way?
Yes, I believe that the community was very engaged in the conversation about the South Madison Plan. There was a lot of work to build those relationships and to engage with the community about about the specific recommendations in the plan. And while this site was identified for redevelopment, the specific nuance of how we look at height in this area was something that was very important in that planning process.
So the community wasn't against development? They just had some conditions within that, you know, the framing that you're proposing?
It's my understanding that the broader community engagement resulted in support for future use of this property for housing, but with specific recommendations for how.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other Alders with questions for staff? Okay, Megan, I'm going to let you off the hook and try my own summary. Since you've both been answering and trying to summarize, so, but check me if I get anything wrong, okay? So for the interpreters, then, a summary of the answers to the questions. Firstly, that this developer has one other project in process in Madison that we're aware of. Secondly, that the site is not likely eligible for Affordable Housing Fund grant. Third, that staff's opinion on what might be possible or what might improve the proposal would be to reconsider the height and to clarify what amenities are included so that they can see if they would be allowed under the zoning, for example, the storm shelter. And then I think that's, fourthly, that the current zoning would support up to three stories and 45 units. And then the last point is that the South Madison Plan was adopted in 2022 and that this particular area of the community was very engaged in the planning process, especially with respect to the height recommendations for the site.
Cuatro concejales, uno hizo dos preguntas y los otros hicieron otras tres. Y las preguntas y el resumen son los siguientes. Uno preguntó que si este, esta compañía eminente tiene otros proyectos trabajando con la ciudad de Madison y ellos tienen en este momento solamente otro trabajo o otro plan de desarrollo con la ciudad de Madison en proceso. La segunda parte, la segunda pregunta, es que con todo lo que se está hablando de la rezonificación y del tipo de vivienda, en realidad este proyecto no acarabaría siendo elegible para subvenciones de vivienda del HUD. La tercera, que ellos estarían, que el staff ha recomendado que se puede considerar el proyecto, pero que tiene que haber muchísima clarificación con respecto a los usos condicionales y a los diseños adicionales que los diseñadores o los proponentes han desarrollado, como por ejemplo el espacio comunitario y además la otra condición de hacer un refugio para tornados o para tormentas. Y que una de las cosas específicas y más importantes es la altura de el proyecto. Porque para la zona donde está, y esa fue la última pregunta, la zonificación como está ahora recomendaría solamente la posibilidad de un edificio de tres plantas para 45 unidades. También se preguntó qué tan viejo es este proyecto o antiguo. Fue propuesto en el 2022, fue propuesto dentro de la proposición del plan del desarrollo del sur de Madison y que sí ha habido suficiente compromiso y comunicación como la comunidad para desarrollo de esta proposición.
Okay, gracias. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Can I just make a clarification real quick in Spanish?
Sí.
Okay, so la última pregunta fue cuánto tiempo, cuán viejo es el plan de la ciudad, que fueron dos años, y cuál fue el, cómo la ciudad tuvo, cómo la comunidad participó en este plan, no en este proyecto, sino la participación en el plan y dijeron que sí que había sido muy efectiva, pero no específicamente en este proyecto. Gracias.
Gracias. Alder Miazze?
Yeah, I know, Mayor, I was just gonna ask if, I know I saw Julian Roy's hand a couple of times. I'm just trying to wonder, I know he's a young developer that's coming before, but if he was to make any transition or hearing what we had to say, I would like to hear if that's okay with you.
It's not, Alder, we're past public comment.
All right, can I have somebody to second that or?
No, we're past public comment, we're into questions for staff at this point in time.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right, and I believe we are now done with questions for staff, not seeing any others. So we will need a motion. President Figueroa Cole, please. So place on file without prejudice is the motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, move to put on file without prejudice, thank you.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. And then again, with apologies to the interpreters, I'm gonna ask if we can allow the discussion to proceed. I will try and summarize at the end and then have you interpret. Thank you. All right, so the motion is to place on file without prejudice. Discussion, Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. Regrettably, I will support the motion to place this on file without prejudice. And regrettably, with understanding that we want to encourage more development in our city. Regrettably, and knowing that we want to encourage young developers, particularly developers of color, to take on projects in our city. Regrettably, in that we specifically want more affordable housing in our city. And I understand that my Alders on Plan, fellow Alders, my colleagues on Plan Commission, share those very goals. But I was on City Council in 2022 when we passed the South Madison Plan. There was a tremendous amount of work and neighborhood engagement that went into that plan. It's a recent plan. And while the plan allows and has recommendations and specifically addresses this particular parcel, it says that under select conditions, yes, there could be a taller building than three stories. Something of a five-story building could be built under select conditions, but the select conditions are site-specific, meaning that it needs to be built into the hill so that the view from the folks who live in the mobile home community is appropriate. I am, as I said at the very beginning, regrettable in that we want to encourage young developers. I very much supported Julian Walters and eminent Development Corporation getting the bid to do the project, what is now called 1150 South Park and was referred to as 1202 South Park for many years, as this is a very key site. As you recall, some of you who weren't on council, this was going to be the site for the third Housing First project within the city. But we put that on hold, just Housing First wasn't working. And it's been vacant all this time. But we selected Julian Walters and his company to develop that project with CDD, with the city, working in tandem. But we haven't broken ground on that project. I think in some sense, it's perhaps caution is in order before a new developer takes on a second project, before the first one has even broken ground. The fact that the recommendation to place this on file without prejudice would allow for a reconsideration of the zoning for this at an appropriate time, perhaps if the preferred housing, affordable housing map would be adjusted, perhaps if the developer in question has more experience in our city and we have confidence that they indeed would be successful. I think caution is in order. I think the recommendations of Plan Commission are in order. I think that we should abide by the South Madison Plan and all the input from residents that occurred in 2022. So I would encourage my colleagues to support the motion to place this on file without prejudice. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Are there Alders in the queue wishing to speak? Alder Miazze?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I remember when there was a Moka Coffee being built on the north side. And I remember when it failed. And I remember being able to work with city staff and the owner in order to have this come to fruition. So given that we talk about, we want to definitely help young African-American developers that are young and new to this developing business, I don't believe it's right to just to put it on file, place it on file with prejudice. If they can work with city staff in order to make everybody happy, I think it's important. So I'm not going to vote to place it on file without prejudice.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the legislative history and I see that the three Alders on the Plan Commission all voted against placing on file. And if any of them would be willing to explain their thinking, I would like to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, I just would like to echo some of the comments that Alder Evers made in terms of, you know, encouraging this particular developer to continue to make proposals that make sense. I've talked to him about sort of the complex issues of this particular project. But I also would want to encourage him to either come back, modify the project. Maybe it could be scaled down to what staff talked about, maybe 45 units. Or even, I hope that he'll continue to apply further requests for proposals that the city has. So, you know, I'm pretty sure he's going to be successful in developing future city projects, and I encourage that.
Thank you, Alder. I again have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. And if that holds, then I'll just briefly summarize for the interpreters. I think I'll do this in two or three chunks. So the first set of comments is from Alder Evers, who regrets he can't support the project, in part because the South Madison Plan is recently adopted. He's working with this same developer on a project on Park Street and believes that caution is in order because that project hasn't broken ground. The motion allows the applicant to come back to the council and for us to reconsider a similar project or a different project at this site. And so Alder supports the Plan Commission recommendation and the South Madison Plan. And I'll pause.
Sí, el concejal Livers lamentó no poder apoyar este proyecto debido principalmente a que el plan del sur de Madison es un plan muy reciente y de momento se está trabajando con este mismo constructor por un plan en un proyecto que todavía aún no se ha hecho el movimiento de tierras necesario para hacer este proyecto. Entonces sería bueno el poder tener un poco más de tiempo y lo positivo de esto es que el archivarse este proyecto no impide que se pueda volver en un momento futuro, volver a la comisión y volver a plantear este proyecto u otro similar.
And Alder Miazze related an experience that he had working with a project in his district, where they would be able to work with staff to move the project forward ultimately, and wants to support young developers, particularly young developers of color, and so will not support the motion to place on file. I'll pause.
Está con el micrófono apagado, Adriana.
La segunda intervención fue de el concejal Millard. Él dice que él ha trabajado con este mismo aplicante en otros proyectos que ellos trabajaron en conjunto con este aplicante y con el personal de la ciudad para avanzar este proyecto que él mencionó. Y tercero, que él apoya los aplicantes de color, especialmente de color y jóvenes, a desarrollar, aplicar para desarrollar proyectos en la ciudad de Madison, por lo cual él no va a apoyar la moción de archivar este asunto de la agenda sin prejuicio en la noche del día de hoy.
Gracias. And then finally, Alder Rumel asked what the Plan Commission Alders thought. And Alder Knox encourages the developer to bring proposals forward. He has discussed the complex issues of this site with the developer, encourages him to come back possibly with a scaled-down building or to respond to future RFPs that the city may put forward.
Y la última intervención fue de el concejal Rumel, que él quiere motivar, o sea, ella trae la corrupción que en el plan, en la Comisión de Planeación, tres personas de la comisión votaron para la moción del día de hoy, por lo cual ella dice que quisiera saber las razones más específicas. Y también dice que de todas maneras quiere continuar motivando a este aplicante, bien sea a hacer un proyecto diferente, a hacer un proyecto más pequeño, menos pisos, menos unidades, o inclusive a proponer algún proyecto diferente a la ciudad de Madison cuando se abran estas posibilidades dentro de la ciudad.
Gracias. All right, I have no further discussion. The motion before us is to place on file without prejudice. Anticipating disagreement, we'll have a roll call vote. All those in favor of placing on file without prejudice will say aye. Those opposed will say no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Field?
Aye.
Aye. Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Uguer?
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney? Okay, I'll come back. Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Vladimir Beris's excuse. Madison?
Aye.
Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Miazze?
No.
Rumel?
Aye.
Aye. Tischler?
Aye.
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 Aye. Vidiver?
Aye.
Aye. Waelia?
No.
No. Bennett?
Aye.
Conklin? Stepped out. Okay. Curry?
Aye.
Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. And Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
All right.
That's sixteen ayes and two noes. With sixteen ayes and two noes, the project is placed on file without prejudice. And if the interpreters could just report that, please?
Entonces se hizo la votación en el consejo, se llamó al orden y a lista de todos los concejales presentes, una votación de dieciséis a favor y dos negativo o en contra, por lo cual hay una aprobación para poner esta petición en archivo sin prejuicio en el día de hoy.
Okay, gracias. Both our interpreters appreciate your time and effort tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we will move on. Alder Vidiver? May we have a ten-minute recess, please? Alder Vidiver will move ten minutes. Alder Evers will second. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of a ten-minute recess? Seeing no objection, we are on recess, let's say, until 9:10. We're about 2 minutes out, folks. 2 minutes out. We're about 1 minute out, folks. 1 minute out. If Alders can take their seats again and turn their cameras back on. All right. It is 9:10, and I'm going to call the council back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alder Evers?
Here.
Field?
Here.
Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Govindarajan?
Here.
Uguer?
Here.
Harrington McKinney?
Here.
Knox?
Here.
Vladimir Beres's excuse. Madison?
Here.
Martinez Rutherford?
President.
Miazze? Rommel?
President.
Tischler?
Here.
Vervier?
Here.
Vidiver?
Here.
Wahelia?
Here.
Bennett?
Here.
Conklin?
President.
Curry?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have four. Thank you. All right, what's before us now is item 20, and without objection, we'll take up item 76 at the same time. The two are related. Item 20 is Legistar 86993, creating sections of the Madison general ordinances to change the zoning at properties located at 6303 Portage, 4821 Hepker. Yes, those two addresses in District 17. And then item 76 is Legistar 86736, approving a preliminary plat of the Leo Living on the properties addressed 6303 Portage and 4821 Hepker. On items 20 and 76, the recommendation on 20 is to place on file without prejudice. And the recommendation on 76 is to reject. Can I get those motions, please? President Figueroa Cole?
Move to put on file without prejudice and the second recommendation to reject.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice and to reject. On items 20 and 76, are there questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the motion is to place item 20 on file without prejudice and to reject item 76. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of both those recommendations? Seeing no objection, we'll record those votes. And we will move on to item 35. Item 35 is Legistar 87045, adopting the Saw Creek Quarter Plan. On item 35, President Figueroa Cole, motion please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 35. On item 35, are there questions for staff? Seeing no... Alder Uguer?
Yes, just a quick question for staff, because I think it would be of interest to the whole council. There was extensive testimony by staff at the Board of Public Works, differentiating for us the difference between adopting this plan and then the detailed work that will follow, and why it's important to have a general plan before we can get to a detailed plan. And I wonder if you'd just comment on that and clarify. I haven't quite summarized that properly.
Thank you, Alder. We have the city engineer here.
Thank you for that question, Alder. I can help answer that question. So what we're looking at in the Saw Creek Greenway is about 1.1 miles of pretty much unmaintained stormwater greenway lands. And given the kind of lack of maintenance over the years, there are some definite real engineering needs in here. But beyond that, there's a lot of variables and options and different considerations. So what we chose to do here was develop kind of an overall high-level plan to help narrow down some of our options, to give us some starting points for doing some more detailed engineering work, and then proceeding into looking into things like the specific permits, et cetera. So what we're trying to achieve with the plan, and going through a very robust and extensive public engagement process, was to bring some of the community values to the plan, as well as our technical expertise, stormwater modeling, and ecological assessment, et cetera, to hone in some of that wide range of options that we had here, and give us a good starting point to start doing some more detailed design work and even budgeting to that standpoint. So what you're seeing here is kind of a balance of all of that work, the kind of high-level engineering based on our stormwater modelings and field assessments, et cetera, as well as a lot of input from the community and trying to balance all of that input, too, to give us a good starting point. And kind of prior, with the speaker's prior comments, too, there is still flexibility in here to build in some of this additional input, too, as we get into that more detailed work.
So just to follow up on that, which is related to a comment or a question that I had for a registrant earlier. So for instance, in developing certain parts of this, staff would be willing to consult experts such as Dr. Fitzgerald on certain tools that could be used to generate the final plan?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin, questions for staff?
Yes, thank you. Can we talk about the burial grounds back there and like what the city ordinance is or what the city's plan is, or how they check to see if it qualifies or doesn't qualify for Native American land?
So what we have in the Saw Creek Greenway is not a burial ground. We do have records from the State Historical Society there, passed to us as confidential because they don't want those shared publicly. But it gives us a little bit of information on where we may need to go through particular state mandated procedures on permitting and things regarding archaeological reviews and particular permits. So I can't remember what the site is classified as specifically, but it is definitely not a burial site. There may be some additional archaeological review, but what we're also looking at is a very vague, generic blob on a map right now, too. So kind of getting into that more detailed work and laying out what an actual construction project would look like, what kind of dictate what our archaeological... project would look like, what kind of dictate what our archaeological review and requirements would be that we'd have to follow. But that is not inconsistent with pretty much any other project that we're doing throughout the city of Madison, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions, so thank you, city engineer. The motion is to adopt the plan. Is there discussion? Alder Conklin.
Thank you, Mayor. All my colleagues know how much time and energy has been spent on this, not only my time and energy, but the staff, the city staff's time and energy we have spent to create this plan. I have worked tirelessly for the last 18 months, re-engaging my community, the things that I said that I was going to do. My community has helped shape the plan. Their input has been taken into effect, into account, and they have shaped the plan of what we are going to see back there in five to 10 years to come still. I mean, we know that the main priority is stormwater management. We have to manage that stormwater back there before we experience more things that we experienced in 2018 with the floods. The staff has gone above and beyond. They have done their due diligence. They have reached out to outside members, outside ecological exams. We have really just hit on every point. One of my constituents was not able to give public comment, technical difficulties, so his comments are being passed around right now as we speak. They also are leaning towards, I think the constituents are leaning towards wanting to have this, you know, slowed down or put on file. And at this point, I just do not see the benefits of where that would get us. We have been working hard. We have brought many voices to the table to be heard, and now that we have heard them, we have came up with a larger plan. And this is only going to help us go forward to be able to answer some of the questions of how much is this going to cost. Well, we don't know until we have a plan in place. So this is just the starting point. This is not the end of it. This is just the beginning. And I ask that my colleagues do support this and approving this, because it is necessary in order to keep District 9 where it needs to be environmentally safe and for all people to enjoy, just not the people who live closest to the greenway. This is for all the residents in Madison, Wisconsin, to enjoy Saw Creek Greenway. But nobody will be able to enjoy it if we do not clean it up and maintain the access pass down in there for them to be able to clean up the trees that are dead and fallen back there. So in conclusion, we have said time and time again that we are going to, and we have used our constituents, for example, Dr. Fitzpatrick, we have used her in other scenarios and other projects around the district. So I would like to just say that if I could move a motion just to add, so the community knows that we're committed to... I want to add this motion with this recommendation, that we minimize riprap bank stabilization and use more environmentally sensitive, nature-based solutions where feasible during the design phases. So, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to add, and Alder, can you just clarify where in the resolution you want to add that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have that part up. Give me one second. But it's just, I want the community to know that we're still wanting to do the most environmentally just stabilization for the banks, because I think that's a big concern for people. So I think this was the best way we were able to say that we're still trying to minimize the environmental injustices to be able to incorporate people's visions and ideas. So let me get... Hold on one second.
I just want to clarify where we're adding that language, so the clerk can get it accurate.
Okay, so could we just put it right towards the end, where after "whereas," future public improvement and maintenance efforts will be budgeted based on the plan's recommendation? The very last one.
Yeah, so we'll add another whereas clause.
Yes, please.
After the last whereas. And can you read it again, Alder?
Yes, I can. One more second. Too many screens up. So it says, "Whereas we will minimize riprap bank stabilization and use more environmentally sensitive, nature-based solutions where feasible during the design phase." Design phases with an S. Thank you.
Okay. Let me just read that back to you so that we all can have it. And then Alder, if you could also email it to the clerk and your colleagues, that'd be appreciated. So the motion is to add a whereas clause, a final whereas clause, that reads, "Whereas we will minimize riprap bank stabilization and use more environmentally sensitive, nature-based solutions during the design phases." And that's been moved and seconded, and you should receive that shortly. Alder Conklin, did you have any additional comments?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel, discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm certainly going to support this, but it does raise a question to me of like, could you tell me more about what you mean by "nature-based riprap," because I have dealt with riprap before, and, you know, so I have visions of what that means, but I don't know what it means in a stormwater corridor. If you or maybe Jim could explain a little more of what that could look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin, would you like to respond?
Can I defer to either JoJo or Engineer?
Any objection?
Wolf. Yes.
Seeing no objection, Cindy Engineer Wolf?
Take this one to our project manager, JoJo O'Brien. She'll be online.
JoJo from Engineering? Go ahead.
That's me. Yeah, thanks, Alder Rommel, for the question. So nature-based solutions along bank stabilization are often referred to as different bioengineering measures. So that means typically reducing the amount of riprap used and trying to replace with vegetation where possible, or some other natural materials. So that can be encapsulated soil lifts. Sometimes you can look to use tree reupments to move the channel away from the banks, to try to stabilize the banks in that way. So there's a variety of different solutions that can be used. We had originally asked the public to weigh in on which types of solutions they were interested in, and the public originally selected riprap, based on the minimal disturbance limits that you would need in relation to other vegetation stabilization options. But based on new input, we're willing to look into that a little bit closer.
Thank you, JoJo. So what's before us? Alder Rommel, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I mean, again, I'm for this, but I'm wondering if in some future, as has been stated, this is the beginning, will there be future reports where you can explain how that works, what you've done, just kind of show us, so we all kind of learn something more?
Yeah. So during each design phase, we would be bringing this back to the board and council for approval, so we'd be able to kind of cross back and compare to, this was the conceptual corridor plan, and then here's the specific design plan for each phase of the project, where we looked at different types of solutions like this, and how they were implemented.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
One more thing, I'm sorry. I just wanted to check and make sure, to reaffirm that the last public comment we got from the Friends of Saw Creek, that that was put into Legistar, because they were having difficult issues pulling it up in Legistar. It wasn't attached to the agenda, so I just wanted to reconfirm.
Alder, if you could maybe forward that to the clerk, we can make sure, we can double-check to make sure that it's included.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so what's before us is the amendment moved by Alder Conklin to include additional whereas clause. Does anybody need me to read that language again? Not seeing any request for another reading. So what's before us is the amendment to add an additional whereas clause. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the additional whereas clause? Seeing no objection, that clause is now included, and what's before us is the main motion as amended. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded. Oh, Alder Uguere?
Yes. I'd just like to frame a few more things and perspectives on this for my colleagues here. I think you've heard the basis of why we need this to then move on to more detailed plans, but, and I do want to place some emphasis on why this is particularly important to District 19. But first of all, engineering has spent almost 3,000 hours on this project to date. That compares with the next most engineering-intensive project that we've seen in recent years, which was the design of Lake Mendota Drive, which took 778 hours, only about a fourth of the amount of work that has gone into this project, 640 hours for the Warner Lagoon project. The main emphasis, or a principal purpose for this project, is to improve downstream quality. And guess where downstream is? District 19, right across Old Sock Road, where we've just gone through a major dredging project that disrupted the whole neighborhood for a better part of a year because of all of the silt that has flown into that Wexford Pond from upstream. By doing this preservation, it will now take, it will take years before we have to dredge again at between $1 and $2 million per dredging. So there's a big downstream impact. I think the other impact is that we've got other watersheds that need attention. And another large watershed, the Spring Harbor watershed, also in District 19, but also flows through several other districts. We need to be able to capture those available engineering hours to pay attention to other things that are also very important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak, so what's before us is the motion as amended. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor, and we will move on to item 55, which is Legistar 86825, amending sections of the Madison General ordinances related to Alder appointments to boards, commissions, and committees to change the appointment terms. On item 55, President Figueroa Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 55. Are there questions for staff? Alder Tischler?
No, I just wanted to just clarify one to make a motion.
Okay, let me just hold on. Are there any questions for staff from any other Alders? All right. Seeing none, then discussion. Alder Tischler?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, to make a motion for the second, within Legistar labeled, "Second, Tischler Propose Alternate."
Alder Tischler removed the second alternate. Is there a second? Moved and seconded for the second alternate. Alder Tischler, do you want to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. Mayor appoints, council confirms appointments to our city boards, committees, and commissions. With the staggered Alder election, we will be, we will now be, have 10 Alders up, 10 Alder districts up for reelection every year. What's in front of you tonight, the original proposal, is, what the original proposal is talking about is appointing 20 Alders for, what originally is the case, sorry, is that we have 20 Alders for two-year appointments. What's before you now with the original is that the mayor would appoint 20 Alders to BCCs every year for one-year terms. This means that we could find ourselves being reassigned to new committees in the middle of our term in office. What I'm proposing in this alternate is to keep two-year Alder term appointments to these boards, commissions, committees, where there are two or more Alders serving, to be two-year appointments. For boards, committees, and commissions, where there's just one Alder serving, there would just be a one-year term. So, yeah, one Alder serving on a committee, one year, two or more Alders serving, it'd be two years. There are only a few committees that have only one Alder serving. There's about seven of them or so. Majority have two or more Alders, or none at all. What my alternate is proposing is to do away with automatically resetting our Alder appointments every year, and offer us the opportunity to have a little more continuity during our time in office. And I ask you to vote yes for the alternate that I'm proposing, to keep two-year appointments on the majority of our boards, commissions, and committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So what's before us is the second alternate. Is there further discussion? Alder Harrington McKinney?
We are into discussions, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. May I ask the Alder questions, since we're in discussion, or does it mostly be staff?
You can ask any of your colleagues a question at any point in time during discussion. It's up to them whether they want to answer.
Okay. So Alder Tischler, could you share with the body your conversation with, when you were making this resolution, share with the staff, the ones that were actually making the appointments for boards, committees, and commissions?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You have to get in the queue if you want to answer it. Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is also for Alder Tischler. Having served on several of the committees that only have one Alder, I wish you would explain more about why you think they're somehow different, when some of them are, for example, land use committees, where there's somewhat of a learning curve. And just if you would respond, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. So just to clarify for everyone, the way this works is Alders ring in to desire to speak. You all can ask questions of each other, but it is completely up to the Alder whether they want to ring back in to answer the questions. Alder Tischler?
Sorry about that. I was not pressing my button. I guess to Alder, Alder Rommel, the reason I made the change to identifying just if one Alder is serving on a board, committee, or commission, is because we're going to have staggered terms. And so by, if we kept it on a two-year, two-year appointments, that would mean that a newly-appointed Alder would have to wait at least a year to be on one of these seven committees. So it's really more just of more looking at kind of fairness. That's the main reason. There are a number of committees where there is one Alder serving, but some of them specify Alder based on where the location or the committee is located, for like the Zoo Commission is an example, District 13, or downtown, they'll have the District Two Alder. But, you know, so for, but for a lot of, for the other seven committees, you know, this, by having those just identified for one-year appointments, it would give an opportunity for new Alders coming in, the opportunity to have a chance to serve on that, on that committee. Again, I'm trying to maintain for the majority of committees... Again, I'm trying to maintain for, for, for the majority of committees that have two or more, that we would just keep what we have, have right now.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, I guess my question is for you, Madam Mayor. Is that appropriate?
I'll allow it.
So you make most of these appointments to these committees?
Yes.
So wouldn't it be, even if we stayed, say, the way that we are, I mean, if we went to a one-year appointment, you would be able to use your discretion if someone, you know, if you wanted to keep someone on a committee for, for a couple of years to gain more, you know, because they have more knowledge on that particular committee? You could do that with your discretion, could you not?
Absolutely, Alder. And I think that the weight of history suggests that often mayors will keep Alders on at least some, if not all, of their appointments over multiple terms. My, my concern here honestly is less about me making appointments and more about the burden on staff.
Yeah, okay.
Because the, it gets very, it's very complicated. Excuse me.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to get your, your perspective.
It's, it's just a very complicated, Alder, to balance the committees, the requirements of the committees, the times that the committees meet, which are often conflicting with each other. And then to try and take into account the requests of Alders, we really do try and give you all one of, like, your top choice if we can, or certainly one of your top three. So the more you restrict who can be on which committee, the harder it is to achieve that. So it's, it's not, I mean, of course, the mayor would have discretion to keep people on committees or not under any circumstance, but I, I think that is actually not the primary concern here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
So Madam Mayor, I don't think that I framed my question to Alder Tischler, and I didn't get an answer, and I, and you led into it with your discussion in terms of the, of the time and obligation. So my question really is, is when we're looking at the framework as it is now, and we're looking at the alternate, what is the, what, could you give us an example of, a summary of what that time commitment, would it be the same, would it be less? I'm just trying to have a sense of what the time involvement would be for your staff to go with the alternate as opposed to where it is. Is that a fair question summary?
It, it is, Alder. I'm not sure I have a precise answer for you. My, in, in talking to Lila DeCosta, who manages the appointments in my office, I think her instinct is that the alternate would make her job harder, and, and presumably that it would take longer, because we would have to work harder to, to, to sort of put, I mean, if you think of it as a puzzle of putting together what you have requested, when you're available, which committees conflict with each other, and then you add on now, one of the Alders has to be from an even district, and one of them has to be from an odd district. It's just one, it's not impossible, it's just one more layer that complicates who can be appointed to what committee in any given year. And so the more complicated it gets, I mean, we already spend hours and hours and hours on this process. So the more complicated it gets, the more hours we will likely have to spend. And, I mean, we won't know until we go through this once, but it is possible that the alternate would, would make it harder for Alders to get the committees that they desire in any given year. But I, honestly, we don't, we won't really know until we go through it once. Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler?
Yeah, and my, my apologies for not addressing the question. Yeah, I mean, we, we had early discussions way back in, in February, you know, when I, when I first brought this up. And again, my, my goal is not to make it harder for, for staff. I mean, my, my day job, I'm staff, I, last thing I want to do is make things more difficult. I, I do believe this eventually will make, make things easier. And we did put in, did put in language that only asking for, for one, one position, one, on a, on a committee to be even, one odd. And when there is a, when there is not somebody who is available to, to serve from either an odd or, or even-number district, then that would come to, back to the council, and we would have, we would have the opportunity to weigh in and discuss among ourselves, which actually would make, would, I think would make, make that easier. Plus, we're talking about assigning just, you know, 10 appointments for 10 Alders, not, not 20 every, every year, so.
Thank you, Alder.
This first year is going to be, you know, the first year is going to pretty much set, set the tone, but after, after that, I think it will, will get into, into a cycle, and I think it will, it will be, will be easier for, for staff. And also, it also creates an opportunity for us to be, to be more involved.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Yeah, I guess this is a comment and question directed for you, Mayor. I understand the, like, the intention behind having staggered terms in the first place is to maintain institutional knowledge within the council, and I can see how turning, you know, turning things over every year leads to the potential of, like, every alder could be assigned to completely different committees. And of course, you would never hurt Alders or do that, but I can see, like, that need to have institutional knowledge with, even within our committees, or more, especially our more, like, prominent ones. So I'm wondering how we can ensure that.
Alder, it's, it's a good question. I mean, again, I, I would turn to history where I think we've had a fair amount of stability on committees, and, and with some, few exceptions, I'm just thinking back over the many years that I've been watching committee appointments, often the reason that Alders leave committees is because they request to leave that committee, or they request to be on a different committee instead. So I think, you know, yes, of course, it's important to have, you know, some historical knowledge on a committee, but I think, you know, for the, for the function of the committee. But I also think that, that you all often don't want to keep serving on all of the things that you get appointed to. And so, you know, I think we have to balance what committees people request to be on in any given year or term with where they have been, and whether that's been a good fit for them, and they, you know, that we could keep them there for the, the institutional knowledge. And, you know, I dislike appointing Alders to committees they don't want to be on. And so, again, I think the more restrictions there are on which alder can be on a committee, the more difficult it is to give an alder the, the committees they request. And, and I'm not talking just about this restriction, I'm talking just even more generally, right? So when, when we have some committees that, that do specify, you know, it, it has to be the District 14 alder, or the District Two alder, and I don't think that's a bad thing, but it does restrict then the choices, right? And, and when we have committees that, then their meeting times conflict, again, it's not necessarily a bad thing, there's only so many hours in the day, but that does restrict the choices of, of what committees you can be appointed to. So I don't think that, that this change in and of itself is necessarily a bad thing. I think it's the weight of all of the different things that add up to potentially fewer choices, and making it harder to balance between the stability of appointing the same people to the same committees, and the desire of Alders to move off of committees, have different experiences, you know, learn different things, or be involved in different issues over time.
Right. I mean, what I'm hearing is, like, there could be a situation where, and the far more likely situation is that there's an alder that actually very much so wants off of committee, and another alder wants, very much wants on that committee, but neither can get their way, really.
That, that has happened. It could happen. I, I honestly, based on the experience of the last several years, feel like it would be much more likely than an alder would wish to get off of the committee, and no other alder would wish to take the spot, or be available to take the spot, given all the conflicts.
Right.
And then if you, again, if you add in that it has to be an alder of either an odd or even district, it's just another, you know, potential restriction there.
And Alders, we can, like, we have the opportunity on our council agenda to reject the mayor's committee assignments.
You can send them back to my office, and we can try again. I mean, we do really, again, try to get Alders to agree to their appointments before they're made. That doesn't always work, people aren't always happy, but, you know, we do try hard to, to get people in places that they're going to be comfortable and willing to serve.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I, Alder Tischler, it's now the fourth time, I'm going to allow it because you were answering questions.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I just want to say, to Alder Bennett, I, you know, that's, that's why the, did include the language about, you know, that, that the council confirms with, with two-thirds of the vote. And again, you know, we're going to be having, you know, a turnover of 10 Alders every, every year, so. And I'm all, I'm only, the language in here is only saying, you know, just, if there's two or more appointment, two or more Alders serving on a committee, just one of those appointments would be an even number, one would be an odd number. And it doesn't, you know, that's, that's, that's all I'm saying, I'm not restricting any, any, you know, beyond that at all. And it just, then again, creates an opportunity for, for those 10 Alders that are, that are reappointed or new to have, have an opportunity to serve on one of the committees.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel, for the second time?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't know, this one just tickles me because, like, this approach doesn't deal with geography, which I think is another balance a mayor would use. And then also, when I start thinking about it, like, a couple of the Alders have all these committees that are assigned to them because of their district, and did any of the people looking at this think, like, do we have to have, like, the District Four alder on all these committees, or the other one probably has a lot, is District 13? Like, could other people serve on some of these committees? Just a, just a question, maybe for the mayor, or for the people that have been digging into committee and BCC stuff. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. I think certainly something that we could look at in the next phase of the BCC conversation. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. I've kind of flip-flopped on this. At CCEC, I voted in favor of the alternate, but I think through this discussion, I've been able to, like, think of a couple of things I hadn't previously. My biggest concern right now is just the geographical differences in where the evens and odds of alder districts currently lie. On the west side, two out of the eight alder districts are evens, whereas the entire Ismus is even district. The east side, you guys are pretty balanced, I will give you that. But I, I think that might cause some issues, because Transportation Commission, for example, if we're thinking about the north-south BRT, then that goes through pretty much just evens, and then District 13. So, or how are we going to balance that out when it comes to, like, issues like that? And then the topic of adding another restriction to committee appointments, I think personally, I'm a little hesitant on that, given at the start of my term, two out of the four committees I served on were, because that's what it says in ordinance. So I only really had two choices when it comes to picking my, my committees. And that's going to be the case for the future District Eight alder as well, who will also be a student and can't have five or six committees. I do wonder maybe, like, if, I do think that consistency in committees is important, and we do get that through the commissioners and the resident members who serve three-year appointments, but for Alders, I think that's also important. Maybe some language that says something like, the mayor, to the best of her abilities, can maintain Alders and reappoint them, something along those lines. If the motion's author is favorable towards that, I think would be cool. But those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak, anticipating disagreement. All those in favor of the second alternate will say aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Evers?
No.
No. Field?
No.
No. Figaro Cole?
No.
No. Govindarajan?
Aye.
Sure, come back. You go.
No.
No. Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Vladimir versus excuse, Madison?
No.
No. Martinez Rutherford?
No.
No. Miadze?
No.
No. Rommel?
No.
No. Tischler?
Aye.
Aye. Vervier?
No.
No. Vitiver?
No.
No. Wajalia?
Aye.
Aye. Bennett?
No.
No. Conklin?
No.
No. Curry?
No.
No. Duncan?
No.
No. Govindarajan?
No.
No. So that's four ayes and 15 noes. With four ayes, the second alternate fails. That's back to the main motion, which is to adopt. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further, Alder Miadze?
Well, as an alder that was taken off his committees, I strongly oppose this change because it further consolidate power in the mayor's office, allowing uterine, uterine decision that can be undermined democratic representation. Committee appointments should be about service and expertise, not political maneuvering. We need checks and balances, according to what some marshals said, not unchecked authority. So I would not support it at all.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before us is to adopt, anticipating disagreement. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Evers?
No.
No.
Excuse me, aye.
Aye.
Based out there.
That's okay. Alder Evers is aye. Field?
Aye.
Aye. Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. You go.
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Knox?
No.
No. Vladimir versus excuse, Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Miadze?
No.
No. Rommel?
Aye.
Aye. Tischler?
No.
No. Vervier?
Aye.
Aye. Vitiver?
Aye.
Aye. Wajalia?
Aye.
Aye. Bennett?
Aye.
Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Bennett and Conklin were both aye. Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. It is 15 ayes and four noes. With 15 ayes, the motion passes, and that will take us to item 56, which is Legisar 87044, amending or repealing various sections in chapters 8, 10, and 33 of the Madison General Ordinance is related to reorganization of city boards, commissions, and committees. On item 56, President Figaro Cole, a motion please.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. On item 56, are there questions for staff? Alder Rommel? Nope, not questions.
No questions.
I do not see anyone else in the queue with questions, so discussion, Alder Rommel? You muted yourself, Alder. There you go.
I, I sent a motion by email to all of you to strike. No, I don't have it in front of me. The part about the PSRC being eliminated.
So Alder Rommel will move to strike the language that removes the PSRC. Is there a second? Alder Knox will second. All right, so what's before us on the floor is an amendment to remove, to restore the in there. On that amendment, are there questions for staff? I'm sorry, Alder Rommel, would you like to speak to it?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. This one, just kind of, if we take away the PSRC, we take away some duties that we've given them that are not replaced anywhere else, which include reviewing service priorities and capital budget priorities for the police and fire department, serving as a liaison with the community on public safety, and having an annual review and recommendations to the, to the mayor and council regarding annual work plans and long-range plans. You know, we do have PCOB, which is on the agenda later, but that's not their jurisdiction. We have the police and fire commission. We could decide to give them more policy authority, but there's no alders that serve on that, and there's no alders that serve on PCOB. So the largest piece of our budget is, like, public safety. And I just would hope that we could keep this committee and help it get the best it can be to do the job that we need it to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree with Alder Rommel. I really think that the two years I've served on this committee, we've had great participation over these last two years. And I certainly feel that we could expand the range of safety issues that impact our city beyond police and fire. I mean, we could have safety, there are a host of safety issues that could be referred to this committee to address, whether it's, you know, you know, pedestrian safety. There's all kinds of issues. We're having these issues with the, with school kids' safeties and safe paths to schools. So I really think this is a committee that really has a charge that's going to become increasingly more important to our city, particularly with some of the things we're hearing about, you know, from our federal government. I really think this is a critical committee that needs to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to support the removal of the Public Safety and Review Committee. And I specifically am going to support the removal is that, that was the committee that I wanted to serve on when I was first elected as alder. And time after time after time, our committees, either they did not meet, or there was no structure there. And we never seemed to get around to the report from the fire department because everything was leveled against the police. And so for that, for that committee and the staffing of that committee would be prepared for that committee meeting, and then they did not have quorum. And so repeatedly, repeatedly, that is what I found as an alder on a Public Safety and Review Committee. And I am, I am, will be supporting that the P, that the Public Safety and Review Committee would be one of the committees that will be sunrise. Not sunrise, that probably is not the right term, but...
Sunset.
Sunset. I knew it was, I was in the, so, so yes, I believe that that committee should be sunset because time after time, it has been so frustrating because I thought that that was going to be the most powerful committee there was. And I sat there, and I sat there probably for about two of my terms, and I realized that it was not going in a direction that it should be. It could have been a strong committee, but it was not. And so the question always came back to what should we do? And, and so that is a committee that I will support some sunsetting.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Yeah, I guess I do see how this, how, how this committee is a little bit duplicative of PCOB. And I'm wondering what's stopping the council, if anything, from maybe directing staff or the PCOB to kind of incorporate some of the responsibilities of, of PSRC into PCOB? Or if those, or if those efforts are already, you know, the PCOB already has some of the directives that PSRC has.
Is that a question for me, Alder?
Yeah. This is a comment slash question. I'm just curious.
We'll leave it as a rhetorical question, Alder. I mean, I think the, the answer is, the council could ask any committee to take up any charge. But historically, excuse me, the council has chosen to take on issues around policing in particular itself through ad hoc committees or task forces rather than delegating them to the PSRC.
Right. Right. Which, yeah.
The attorney may have some...
Alder, I just thought the COB part of its charge, though, is community outreach and engagement, which the PSRC was, is also charged with.
And the PCOB is also charged with analyzing the budget, right? Which is what the PSRC is also charged with?
I don't know that the COB has a formal charge to review the budget.
Okay.
I mean, they can. And, I mean, having attended a lot of the PSRC meetings over the years, I think they had a challenge with that task anyway, to review the police and fire department budgets in a timely manner to be able to provide any meaningful input.
Right. I suppose my suggestion would be those that are, are hesitant to repeal the PSRC would look to other outlets that we currently have to kind of reorganize those efforts instead. That's a comment. Yeah. Sorry. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank Alder Rommel for making this amendment. I will not be supporting it, not because I don't think that public safety is worthy of review, but because it is so important and forms such a large portion of our budget. Issues that are pertaining to public safety should come to the entire body. And that is what we're doing with quarterly police reports, with CARES updates, with things like that. I think that the logic in doing away with this committee is in recognizing that it, this element is so critical and so crucial, we should all be up to date. We should all be informed. We should all be engaged as to how our money is spent in this area. So given the fact that PSRC has a history of being dysfunctional and overly politicized, perhaps, I appreciate the idea that we take on those responsibilities collectively as a body and debate them as needed as a whole. So I won't be supporting this amendment, but I do appreciate Alder Rommel for making it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney for the second time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my, part of my question was the, the fire department. But we have been incorporating the report from CARES and the fire. So that was, that was the landing, is that at these, the Public Safety and Review Committee, we would never get to the report of the fire department. They prepared and all of that. And so I want to make sure that they land. And if we're opening it up in terms of it being a report to the full body, they would also have an opportunity to present their program. And so I think we're headed in the right direction in terms of sunsetting, public safety and review, and then making sure that there is space and opportunity that we hear from our fire department. Because they are doing a wonderful job sometimes, and it would be frustrating to me that they'd show up at these meetings and we would not have time to listen to them. And so we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the insight from Alder McKinney as well, from her time serving on the committee. Can I get Deputy Mayor Baumell to kind of explain why this committee is on this list, if that's okay?
Is there objection? Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. We, we did, as you know, through the process of analysis, look at a review of mission statements, talk to alders, talk to staff, et cetera. And we did hear from alders that they thought there was some redundancy with other committees related to PSRC. We heard from staff, I think something that was more related to a point in time for the most part. There was a point in time, as PCOB was getting up to speed, that they were asking for a lot of kind of educational briefings. So there was a point in time where there was a lot of duplicate briefings. I don't believe that is still the case. My understanding is it's not. But nonetheless, there was redundancy elsewhere. So what's already been, two things particularly, the full council and the finance committee. Also, a little bit with Board of Public Health as they take on violence prevention work. But primarily, the, as has already been said here, policy decisions are something that the full council has expressed an interest in, has demonstrated an interest in. This council and former councils. So the, the staff briefings that go to PSRC also come here. The full council asks for quarterly reports for, on public safety. When policy issues come up, ad hoc, like, the body worn cameras being an example of, of forming a task force to investigate that issue. And likewise, the other was the finance committee. So when I went and looked back, I, we've, we've heard they have this budget oversight rule. If you go back and you look over a year's worth of agendas, what you actually see on the agendas is their review of contracts that then go to the finance committee, and their review of moving money that then goes to the finance committee. Looking around at other departments and, and their committees, they typically don't take contracts or budget moves to their committees. They just go to finance. So this is kind of an anomaly, and it's duplicative of the role that we have other, other committees that already play.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record and for some context for my colleagues who don't serve on the committee, we do have quite a pattern of this committee being canceled for lack of quorum, including during this term. Looking back in the past meeting, agendas and minutes page, I'm seeing cancellations from May, August, and September of '23, and then again this year, August. We ended up having to go to fewer meetings, and ultimately are in a place of the committee members having an intention of looking for more work, and that, it doesn't really materialize. And I certainly do appreciate the briefings that we receive from the agencies and an opportunity to ask questions. And I also appreciate that we can do that here. So I don't plan to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox for the second time?
Yeah, just a few comments. I think one of the things about this committee is, a lot of, besides getting the reports, a lot of it depends on referrals from me and our colleagues. And if we choose to go to task forces or things like that, as opposed to referring it to the appropriate committee, then that might have a lot to do with the amount of, of work that a committee has an opportunity to perform. So I think that's, that's an issue. Again, I'll, I'll reiterate that there will be many issues related to safety. School safety is probably one. Even, and, and given the complexity of what we deal with, with the fire department and particularly the police department, I think it warrants having some additional committee, you know, focus on those things before it gets to the council, so they won't have to debate everything at these long, large council meetings. But my biggest concern is this. We're supposed to be a government that's based on participatory democracy. And I think when we start with this particular committee in particular, we start relegating that all to the council, then you're restricting opportunities for citizens to participate in their government. And I think that's real, that's a real critical, important thing, since they're the ones that experienced a lot of the things that happened in our community. What we're doing is saying, we alders know best. And then that relegates residents to three minutes of fame, of comments, and then that's their extent of participating. I think this is a bad precedent we're setting here, particularly for this committee and a few other committees. So I really would urge my colleagues to really rethink this. Allow the citizens to participate in their government, have input, into real input into their government, and not take, not look at ways to take that away, only to reduce the work on staff.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor, and everyone for your giving consideration to this. I would like the, I guess the privilege to remind you that in 2016, '17, and '18, this council dived in really deep into police policy reform and procedures. And one of the things we did, besides creating an ad hoc committee that you all probably know about, was we created a president's work group that came up, that only met for a short period, and came up with 13 recommendations, of which all of them you think about every day. And not that the ad hoc committee didn't follow up, but, but the quarterly reports came out of that work group. The reviewing the PSRC, is it living up to his mission, came out of that work group. Having a CARES-type program came out of that work group. And, and just the Office of the Independent Monitor came out of that as a recommendation of that work group. And root cause analysis, and so much more. So I guess I feel like an attachment to it. I never wanted to serve on PSRC. It seemed like a more conservative body, but it's the largest agency, and there's many policy issues that could go before the PSRC that won't have a committee that an alder serves on going forward. And so the largest budget in the city and policy issues, whether it's about, you know, accepting money from feds for, you know, positions, or, you know, we even debated whether we accept those big vehicles at one point, tasers. I mean, all the things that are policy questions could go to, to the PSRC first and be a place for experts and community to engage before it comes to the council. And I guess if you give up these, these rights that you've given yourselves, I, you know, like, what are you saying? That you don't, the quarterly reports are data. They're not policy. They're not like, there's the chief collecting all the information we want, and it's great. I'm not saying it's not. But it's not a policy decision to hear a quarterly report. And I, and the PCOB needs enough to get going on its own without adding more. I mean, if you thought it would be better just to extend it for a year, I could consider that. But I thought, I believe that this agency should exist. So I, that's the motion I made. I think it has a role if we give it the, the help that it needs. Thank you.
Alder? Alder Bennett for the second time?
Yeah, I'm just going to be brief. I, and then proceed to give a long statement. But I do feel, also feel that attachment, you know, specifically to public safety issues, like, truly, that's kind of why I'm literally sitting here right now. And of course, it evolved over time. But I think this is an issue that's not going away. Like, we just celeb, or, I celebrate is the weirdest way to say. Honored. There you go. Tony Robinson and his, and his 10-year anniversary of coming home. And, you know, we had all of those ad hoc committees come out of that. But I don't think that the city has truly identified how we want to, the best way to continue dealing with public safety issues that are a continued issue. We have PCOB... We have PCOB that's, I don't know, doing its own thing, and PSRC that has continued canceled meetings. So it seems to me like continuing down this path is not the right way to go. And I think this is one of those issues we need to take a step back and level set, like how we can best address these issues in the way that all of our community can handle it. And I don't think that we're gonna be able to come to a resolve right here in this, on this vote. And so I would suggest that for this particular, a very important issue, we take that in its own stride rather than trying to tackle it right now, tonight.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to belabor the point, but felt compelled to speak. I feel empathy listening to some of the challenges from some of my peers who are appointed and know that we all Alders have seen cancellations. It affects our agendas. Oftentimes, we are making policy from the floor. But I do agree with Alder Rummel and am going to be supporting the amendments just because of the topic that we're talking about. We talk about public safety often, even listening to Alder Harrington McKinney's comments about the agendas being primarily focused on police when both police and fire have the top biggest budgets and largest departments. I'm also looking at the composition of the membership, and four seats will become available this April, and there's a vacancy. And so I feel, it's not bittersweet for me, but bittersweet in a term that I will not be continuing on, but I would urge members to do what they can to, to get the word out about PSRC, it's late. To community members, because I think that there is a vast majority of the community that does not know that this committee exists, the power that it holds, and the power that their voice has in terms of public safety, specifically for marginalized, unrepresented, and oppressed populations in the past. So just because of the point of it being more policy-focused, looking at budgetary, also having attended several of the last PCOB meetings, that membership is new, and there's a lot of training to get up to speed on. And so we're talking about things like SOPs and MOUs, and what are the constitutional rights of our public safety entities. And so I think it's too important to bypass it now, but again, encourage the body of policymakers to do the work so that the work of committees can be, follow the process, I think, of getting to council and council being well-informed and not creating policy on the spot. And so for public safety, for me, it's too important right now to do away with, and I think there's more work that can be done to amplify the work that's of the Public Safety Review Committee, to amplify the voices and needs of those who we say and we hear continuously have been underserved and overrepresented when it comes to public safety issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion before us is the rubble amendment to continue the PSRC as a body, anticipating disagreement. All those in favor of continuing PSRC will say aye. Those opposed will say no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Evers?
No.
No. Field?
No.
No. Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Govind Rajan?
No.
No. Ugher?
No.
No. Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Latimer Burris is excused. Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Miazze? No. Rummel?
Aye.
Aye. Tischler?
No.
No. Verveer?
Aye.
Aye. Vidiver?
Aye.
Aye. Wihalia? I think she's excused. Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Conklin?
No.
No. Curry? Aye. Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. 10 ayes and 8 noes. Only 10 ayes, and requiring 11 to pass, the amendment fails. And what's back before us is the main motion. Is there further discussion on the main motion? Alder Verveer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a parliamentary inquiry, please. Is the main motion before us, as recommended by CCEC with their amendment?
Yes. Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes. So what's before us is the motion as recommended by CCEC. Alder Knox, further discussion? Alder, you're muted.
Yeah, I had a similar question. I'll just, is this just discussion?
Yes.
All right, I'll just go into discussion. I really do understand the need to reduce the number of committees that we have, and that kind of also reduce the number, I know that because you have staff connected to all these committees, that invariably adds to their workloads as well. I particularly was concerned about the proposal, hopefully, regarding the council on aging. And when I think about my participation on the council of aging, I have to recognize the large, and I guess each year, the growing population of senior, and how important this group is to our city. And I would really be reluctant to see the important issues related to seniors to get subordinated in a larger group of community issues and not get the attention that they deserve. I think just by the fact of the percentage of seniors in our senior residents in our community warrants some special attention. And again, I generally get back to, I just think overall, we're really having the opportunity to reduce the amount of participations from our residents. And I really, that's something I feel real strongly about, most of us, at one time, we weren't serving as Alders. What were we doing to participate in our government? We were serving on committees, and serving on commissions, and serving on boards, and making sure we're being the voices of different parts of unrecognized community members, whether they're seniors, persons of color, people with disabilities, what have you. And I really think we need to do a real, deep process of thinking about what kind of government do we want to have. We always talk about encouraging people to participate on committees and commissions and getting the feedback. As Alders, we're challenged alone trying to get that feedback from our constituents. But one way we get participation from the great variety of skills and expertise of average citizens in our community is through committee participation. But in particular, for the aging, who's gonna be their voice when they're lumped in with other important issues like youth and violence prevention and what have you? It's difficult now, and I know we don't have an unlimited budget, but we really need to look at what populations deserve to have their own attention and not get that taken away. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion before us is to adopt with the recommendations of CCEC. So anticipating disagreement, all those in favor of adoption will say aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Field?
Aye.
Aye. Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Govind Rajan?
Aye.
Aye. Ugher?
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Knox?
No.
No. Latimer Burris is excused. Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Miazze?
Aye.
Aye. Rummel?
No.
No. Tischler?
Aye.
Aye. Verveer?
Aye.
Aye. Vidiver?
Aye.
Aye. Wihalia is excused. Bennett? Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. 17 ayes and 2 noes. Nope. 15. 15 ayes and 2 noes. With 15 ayes, the motion passes. And that will take us to item 58. Item 58 is Legis 87288, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinance as related to removal hearings to prescribe hearing procedures and consider removal of Alders from the common council. On item 58, President Figaro Cole, motion, please.
Move to that.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 58. On item 58, other questions for staff? Seeing none on item 58, is there discussion? Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I rise for a discussion specifically for this agenda item. And let me start. The common council may modify or supersede any steps in the process established by this section only with an affirmative vote of 2/3 of the members of the common council, cannot conflict with Wisconsin statutes. Any such alternatives related to the conduct of a hearing shall ensure the due process rights of both the complainant and the Alder, who is the subject of the complaint, as determined by the hearing. And I will stop there, because my first question is, it requires a 2/3 majority of the council. It doesn't address what happens if there is a tie. That's my first question. The other is, is that the complaint transmitted, is transmitted to the mayor, the common council president, vice president, council, common council office, but not, and I didn't see the mayor's interaction, not, excuse me, I didn't see the attorney's interaction in that at all. Since we have a city attorney, and this is a very serious removal process, I'd like to see the city attorney involved in this question. And I'm gonna continue. And with item number C, it said, the common council shall determine by majority of all members, the city attorney gets involved at the point of a hearing on the complaint. Again, what if there is a tie? The city attorney should be informed along the process, not at the end, with the formation of a hearing. That's when the city attorney steps in. I had a question with item D, the process of the hearing. The hearing procedures, the deliberations, all of those are in sync, so I don't have a question with that. What else did I have? Oh, the letter or email that was sent by a constituent to all of the Alders, and it addressed the question of, does this usurp the rights of the district? I won't read that because that went to all of the Alders, and so that constituent raised some very critical issues related to the process of removing an Alder. And let me continue. It says, "A recommendation will be made from the floor by the executive committee." And so with such an important item before us, this item came before the floor from the executive committee as a recommendation. In the editor's note, there were still corrections. The title, creating section 2.37 of the MGO, related to removal hearings to prescribe hearing procedures to censor, the term "remove" was taken off, removal of an Alder from the common council. And there is a, this is a very serious deliberation that we are undertaking. And I note that the file was created February of the 19th, and it was on the agenda for the executive committee on 3/11, and it's now before us to make that decision. The common council executive committee is in control. There are nine members of the executive committee, and this is a decision that will, that bears discussion. And why is this before us at this point? I think that having this discussion is very critical. We need to have those procedures in place. I'm not against that, but I just want to make sure that we have a full deliberation about what the content is, and to have it before the executive committee on a meeting that started at 4:30, and then have it before the council at 6:30, does not allow us enough time to really unpack this in terms of future considerations. And once we approve this, it will take a 2/3 majority, majority to unwrap it. And I think that we're headed in the right direction. We do need to have a procedure for removing an officer, an Alder, but I think that we need to really have a discussion to make sure that we've looked at it and examined it, and to have a full proposal that we can bring before the body.
Thank you, Alder. I just want to clarify, were those questions for staff or just laying out the issues of concern?
I'm just laying out the issues that I want.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox.
Are we still in questions for staff?
Well, no, the Alder was in discussion.
Did we pass that? Are we?
Yeah. But...
Madam Mayor, are we?
We are, we had moved past questions for staff into discussion, but if you...
You would entertain?
I would entertain.
Thank you. I appreciate you accommodating me. And my question is for Attorney Hoss.
Go ahead.
So can you describe currently, what are the particular avenues for removal of an Alder?
Sure, thank you, Alder. Really, two, under the statutes which this ordinance flushes out in more detail, there can be a hearing in front of the council. The council can vote then by a 3/4 vote to remove an Alder if they find cause. The only other way to remove an Alder is by recall election, which requires a petition of the electors of the district. I believe it's equal to 25% of the voters in the last general, last November election. And then there's a recall election, and the voters decide.
Okay. So did you describe two scenarios or three?
Two. Two.
Two. Right, okay. And so can you kind of describe what impact this particular change would have? Is it just describing a procedure to do the first part of having a hearing for the council?
Yes, exactly, Alder. I think this ordinance provides significant... Yes, exactly, Alder. I think this ordinance provides significantly more detail than the statute does in, as far as laying out a process for the council to follow if a complaint is received. And so that, that includes, you know, what happens with the complaint, where it's filed, how it gets processed, how it comes to the council, just the details of the process, all the way through, you know, retaining a hearing examiner, conducting the hearing, what the order of the questioning is, the discussion by the council, and ultimately, a vote of the council.
Okay. My other question is, would this, would these procedures encourage some additional cost in terms of, I don't know if it would be legal representation or things like that? Can you tell us what the potential impact that would be?
Sure. The cost would be the same as what the process would be under the statute. As I said, this is just a more specific procedure than is laid out in the statutes. But the statutes contemplate, there can be a hearing officer, a hearing examiner retained, also a stenographer because it's required that transcript be produced for possible court review. Those are all costs that are assumed by the city unless the council determines that essentially the complaint was filed in bad faith, and then the council can charge the complainant with those costs.
Okay. And I guess, I don't know if you can answer this last question. Maybe it's for finance or something. So where would these costs, whose, what budget area would these costs come from? Maybe that's for finance or something?
Definitely.
We probably would have to determine where those costs would be paid if they were not budgeted, whether they would be charged to the council or the attorney's office. But that would be a process we would look at throughout the year as a part of the projections that we do throughout the year and consult with the finance committee on that if, if additional funding is needed.
So currently, we wouldn't know if it would come from the council budget, the mayor's budget, or wherever?
That's correct. As you may also be aware, we also budget a contingent reserve each year to address any sort of unforeseen costs, and funding can be appropriated by the council from that.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you for indulging me.
Absolutely. Alder Miazze, questions and/or discussion?
I wanted to add to the amendment of the ordinance.
Do you have an amendment, Alder?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. It'll be retroactive complaint prohibited. No complaint for removal under this section shall be based upon reference, conduct, actions, or allegations that occurred prior to Alder's most recent reelection. Complaints must be limited solely to events or conduct that took place after the commence of the current term. Due process assurance, all removal proceedings initiated under this section shall adhere to the following due process standard: timely notice, prompt and clear notice of any complaint, and scheduled hearing, right to counsel, opportunity to obtain legal representation and fully participate in proceedings, impartial hearing, and unbiased process where the evidence is presented, contested, and evaluated fairly, and electoral mandate consideration, recognition that reelection reflects public, public confidence, and only conduct occurring after reelection is subject to review.
I'm sorry, Alder. Firstly, you, you need to send that language to the clerk and to your colleagues.
All right.
And secondly, can you specify where you're proposing to insert that language?
It could be at the very end.
You, you need to specify where you're proposing to insert it.
At the very beginning.
At the beginning?
Make it seven A. A, and so A, so seven A will be retroactive complaint prohibited. Then B would be due process assurance. Then C would be effective removal vote. And that will go under seven A. So the current way it has it right now...
So you're proposing to, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but you're proposing to add a, a new clause as seven A, a new seven B?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And then renumber the rest?
Yes. I mean, I could send it to all alders right now.
Okay. So, so you would propose a new seven with each of these clauses being the appropriate letter?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So that's the amendment. Is there a second? Alder Harrington McKinney will second for, for discussion purposes. Alder Miazze, do you wish to speak to the amendment?
Yes. Well, we know how, since March of 2024, that I've been asked to step down and remove her from office. So this statement that I'm giving, "So my reelection was a strong endorsement from the community of my record and dedication to public service. Any move, removal process must be due process, which means that any complaint should be only applied to actions taken after most recent reelection. Retroactive applying allegations from before our election undermines both the integrity of the democratic system and the trust of voters that have placed in their elected officials. If the common council president truly believes this process was necessary, she had multiple opportunities to raise it, whether it's 2021, when I was first sworn to seat, or 2022, when she endorsed my opponent. Instead, this ordinance is now being pushed forward after I secured sixty-six percent of the votes, raising serious concerns about our political, political motivations rather than genuine accountability. Since March 2024, I have observed efforts behind closed doors between the common council president and the city attorney to draft an ordinance that disregards fundamental principles of due process. Elevating authority without ensuring fairness sets a dangerous precedent. The essence of justice is not in who holds power, but in how the power is applied, equality, impartially, and aligned with our legal and ethics standards. I remain committed to serving this community with integrity. I urge my colleagues to uphold the principles of fairness and due process, ensuring that our decisions reflect justice rather than political maneuvering. This trust placed in us by the voters must always come from personal or political interest."
Thank you, Alder. The city attorney reminds me that ordinance changes do have to be reviewed by the city attorney? Have you run this language past a city attorney?
No, you're, no. If, if at six-thirty, that'd be, if they met behind closed doors to come up with this and it's before the body to vote on, I think this is the right place...
You, you just need to send it to the city attorney, Alder.
Okay.
Which you could have done at any point during this meeting. And if you would please also send it to the clerk at N. Perez at cityofmadison.com so she can have it for the record?
What's it called? M...
N. Perez. And then to your colleagues as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure that the city attorneys received it and can review it. I don't have any, Alder Duncan?
Just called the question.
The question's been called. I'm not sure that's necessary as there's nobody else in the queue, but I do want the city attorney to have an opportunity to read the language at least before you all vote on it. Do you have it? Not yet? So we'll stand informal. It might be more efficient for the alder to bring his computer over to you at this point. Okay. Alder Harrington McKinney?
So for clarification, Madam, Mayor, are we rescinding the call for the question? Where are we in terms of?
We're, we're standing informal while the city attorney reviews the proposed ordinance amendment because all ordinance change language has to be reviewed by the city attorney.
So there's no business that's happening?
At the moment, no.
Okay.
While we stand informal, I'll just remind the body that it's polite to provide proposed amendments to the body and to the relevant staff as early as possible. Please.
So thank you, Alder. I have reviewed it. I mean, there isn't anything legally incorrect about including this as an amendment. I would just note that the due process assurance, I believe all of those elements are already included in the procedures outlined in the existing ordinance. You can certainly include this language if you like to reinforce that with the exception of the electoral mandate consideration language. I don't think that would, is part of the existing ordinance.
Thank you, city attorney. All right. So the question before us is the Miazze amendment to add language, which I hope has hit your inboxes at the moment. Anticipate some disagreement. All those in favor of the amendment will say aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Evers?
No.
No. Field?
No.
No. Figueroa Cole?
No.
No. Govendra Rajan?
No.
No. Uguere? Harrington McKinney?
Alder Harrington McKinney?
All right, I'll come back. Alder Knox?
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't see it right now, so pass on me for right now.
Okay. You want me to come back to you?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Vladimir Beres is excused. Madison?
No.
No. Martinez Rutherford?
No.
No. Miazze?
Yes.
Aye. Rommel?
Sorry, abstain.
Abstain. Tischler? What was that?
No.
No. Vervier?
No.
No. Vidiver?
No.
No. Walea is excused. Bennett? No. Conklin?
No.
No. Curry? No. Duncan? No. Uguere? Oh, he's not here. Sorry. Harrington McKinney? Abstain. And Alder Knox?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain because I just having problems getting back into my email.
That's one aye, thirteen noes, three abstains.
With one aye, the amendment fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to adopt. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion on the motion. Alder Harrington McKinney?
So I just want to put before the body that we just reviewed this at the executive committee meeting that happened at four-thirty, and now it's on the agenda for approval at the six-thirty common council meeting. This is, this is critical, and we really do need the opportunity to make sure that we have the strongest language that can be implemented so that we can pass this. I think that it is not ready for a full discussion and vote by the council at this point. I think that it either should be, so I'm, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make an amendment that this be placed on file without prejudice.
Alder Harrington McKinney will move to place on file without prejudice. Is there a second? Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. And now there's discussion. Alder Govendra Rajan?
I'm just going to very quickly say, just like every other ordinance, resolution, whatever, this was introduced at least two weeks ago. Everyone in this room and the public has had access to review this text at least two weeks ago. We have been talking about the code of conduct for at least a year. So if you were not prepared about this big thing that's been in the news for, forever, I don't know really what to say. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and we've had, we knew we were voting on this tonight, and we get the agendas in advance of the meeting. We have obligations as elected officials to read up on this. But suggesting that we're only looking at this tonight and considering this tonight doesn't do justice to who we are as alders. And to suggest, as, as Alder Miazze has, that this is targeted toward him is, is not accurate. This is to address the need for having more clear, more clearer language with what it takes to remove an alder. This is not targeted legislation to any particular person. And I find it offensive that, the suggestion that it is. But for the record, behavior most recently that was in question by Alder Miazze occurred while he was also in office, not just prior to the time of his election. So that is not germane to the discussion here. We are not directing this towards any particular alder, but because we went through this particular situation, which by the way, nobody was voted off this, we had a procedure to remove an alder. We did not implement it in censoring Alder Miazze, which was done through the code of conduct and ethics code that we currently have in place. We abided by the language and the instructions in our ordinance. So I, I find it offensive to suggest that we're not going about our business the right way, that we haven't had enough time to look at it. So folks, let's move on. Let's see, let's acknowledge that this is something that we need to add to our ordinance in future situations if, God forbid, it ever becomes necessary to remove an alder from this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Mayor. This was said in CCEC, but I do not believe it's been said here tonight. I apologize if it has and I missed it. We do not have a process. So at any time, any resident could make a complaint against any one of us. This is codifying a process that can be changed. It can be revisited. It can be revised. We've had a period of more than weeks where the, our common council president introduced it to us with the chief of staff. So if we have been paying attention, this has been before us for quite some time. So again, it is codifying a process because if someone filed a complaint tonight against what I'm saying right now, there is no process for staff to follow. There is no clarity. So this is the start of creating that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to add anything else that have already been said except that this document was presented to CCEC in November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. So this didn't just was born this, a few hours ago. We discussed it back in, also in January twenty-twenty-five, and I believe one... one more time before today. So that's four times before it get to this body. So as my colleagues had mentioned before, not only you had two weeks of... You had two weeks from the introduction to review the document, we actually, the entire body was welcome at CCEC to have these discussions since last year in November 26. So I just want to put those dates out for the record, that this is not a new thing. This has been going around for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyazze?
Since my name is mentioned, let me just say this, and let me be clear. Everybody here knows what I went through since March of last year. Asked to step down, asked to resign, asked... All in the papers, but yet I went through the due process. You guys hired an attorney, $18,000 of taxpayers' money, another $13,000 of my own money. That's how much we get. This is relevant. You've got a chance to censor and do all what you did, so let me have my point.
Alder, you need to address the chair, Alder.
So I mean, Madam Mayor, can I still speak, or is it?
Get to relevance pretty quickly, Alder.
So basically, what I'm saying, Madam Mayor, I went through the due process. When you... The city hired an independent investigator, $18,000, and said I did not violate it, the same code of conduct that we instituted.
Alder, this is not relevant. The procedures against you were under APM 3-5. We're talking about something completely different here.
I just don't want the next person that sits in my seat to go through what I went through, and next minute later, we sit here and say, well, that's retroactive, because he, back in the day, he did something that was wrong. We should have the due process. That's what our court system... There's more depressing issues, housing. This city should be talking about lobbying the government in order to get people tax... Instead of getting taxed out of their homes. There's body cameras that we're not even talking about. There's other depressing issues, and you guys are sitting there talking about me and spending all this tax dollar money.
Alder, you do need to stay relevant to the issue before us, which is establishing a process.
Madam Mayor, I'm just saying, where's the due process? Where's the justice in having the next person that come forth going through what he... I went through, but it, you know, and if he didn't... If I did not have the resiliency of serving my constituents, I would not be in this chair right now. So I'm just asking, if we're talking about due process, Madam Mayor, I'm just asking that let the court system do what it's supposed to do, and let us be about city business. You say that all the time, Mayor. Let's be about city business.
Thank you, Alder. Alder... Question's called. There's two Alders in the queue who could defer. Is there an objection to moving to the question? Seeing no objection to moving to the question. The question before us is to adopt item 58. Anticipating disagreement. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes, I had... So...
The question's been called. Alder Harrington McKinney?
I was in the queue to... This is where I was before, and so when you asked, was there any objection to calling for the question, rather than me shouting out, I was in the queue because...
You object to calling the question, Alder?
Yes.
So we'll move to a vote on the call of the question? I'm so tempted to do a voice vote, but none of y'all have done that before. So is there objection to... Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of calling the question? I'll say it again. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of calling the question?
Objection.
Is there any further objection? Seeing none, Alder Harrington McKinney will be recorded as voting no on the call of the question. The question is called. The item that's before us is adoption of item 58. Anticipating disagreement. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
The motion is to place on file right now?
No, we've dispensed with the motion to place on file. The motion is to adopt. The motion before us is to adopt item 58. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. And the clerk will... We did, in fact, vote on placing on file. Did we not? I don't think so. Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm wrong. We voted on the amendment. So I'm sorry, yes. The motion before us is to place on file without prejudice. The motion to place on file is withdrawn. Is there objection to withdrawing? Seeing no objection to the withdrawal, the motion before us is to adopt. Okay, sorry about that. That one's on me. My fault. Bad notes. Everybody clear what we're voting on? All right, the motion is to adopt. The clerk will please call the roll. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Field? Aye. Aye. Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Govindarajan? Aye. Aye. Uguir? Aye. Aye. Harrington McKinney? Pass. Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Latimer Burris is excused. Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Miyazze? No. Rommel?
Aye.
Aye. Tischler? Aye. Aye. Vervier? Aye. Aye. Vidiver?
Aye.
Aye. Wajalia is excused. Bennett? Aye. Aye. Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Curry? Aye. Aye. Duncan? Aye. Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney? Aye. Seventeen ayes and one no. Seventeen ayes, the motion passes, and I'll apologize again, particularly to Alder Harrington McKinney for taking us onto the wrong motion, and thank you for being gracious about that. All right, so what is then before us is item 77. We took up 76 with item 20, so that's been dispensed with. So what's before us is item 77, which is Legisstar 86824, a substitute amending the report of the Lamp House Block Ad hoc Plan Committee. And on the substitute...
Adopt with the recommendations?
Moved and seconded to adopt with recommendations. On item 77, are there questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff on item 77, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion on item 77. Alder Rommel?
We can't let this one go without some discussion, right?
You could.
I appreciate the work that has been done with the substitute. I shared with the sponsors, I had some concerns about the whereas clause in the substitute. I'd have to dig it out to tell you which one, but... The whereas, some of the report's recommendations regarding preserving views from the Lamp House and public views to the Lamp House could present challenges for future redevelopment of adjacent parcels, and providing some flexibility in these recommendations may support new construction while preserving the Lamp House site. I really just think that we shouldn't have in our policy something that really helps a specific developer. It almost looks like a quid pro quo. And I hope that... I know that's not the intent, and I understand this developer certainly has... is surrounded by this property and owns the property itself, but I still think that the main point of this resolution and the substitute is that we have conflict between our zoning code and an adopted plan. And while I could argue that if we really wanted to, we could amend a lot of adopted plans, because there's a lot of conflicts, but if that's what... If the body wants to go forward with this amendment, let's stay focused on the main point, which is trying to reduce the conflict for clarity. And I'm hoping that the sponsors will hopefully respond, and if not, I may. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
I was really hoping this would just slide through, but because it hasn't, and because, you know, I'm one of the sponsors, this is one of those things. It's in the district. It's been around for a while, a very long time. It's very historic. Love the Lamp House and Frank Lloyd Wright. And I think the... After I spoke with District Two Alder, former District Two Alder Patrick Heck about this, what our conversation... Within our conversation, he said, I think this comes down to, like, times are changing. And at the end of the day, like, the council made a vote in 2021. The plan doesn't align with that vote. And now here we are in 2025, and developers putting something forward and can't get it past staff approvals. And that's just how this process works, kind of like how I was talking about last meeting. We make it so hard to build housing, and we have a local developer here that has definitely put a lot of money into just literally creating plans to put in front of the city for it to be rejected, which increases housing costs in the grand scheme of things. But overall, I think that we could amend the language in the substitute to heck, and at the end of the day, like, if the result's the same, the plan is reflects the zoning code, that's the main point. So if you want to amend it, I'm fine with that, but also I don't really see the point of it. I kind of... It kind of seems trivial. And I don't see... I don't disagree with the last whereas clause about how the Lamp House report as is kind of does halt redevelopment. It's not for a specific developer. This impacts several properties in my district, actually within just the adjacent properties, potential redevelopment of the Capital North Garage. Or if... Or if we go beyond that, there's... And all the properties out to the lakes would be impacted. So I don't think this is just a quid pro quo for a singular developer. I think this is just a factual statement of what the impact is. So I... That's all I have to really say. I'm really glad that we are able to take this item up, and honestly, maybe we should have a procedure for how to address situations where our adopted plans don't align with more recent council votes. So that's all I have to say. I think this is just aligning ourselves with... Aligning the plans with what we've already decided. That question's been asked and answered. I'm sorry. It's a report that's adopted in a downtime plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share a little bit of background on how we arrived with the substitute, because prior to that, the proposal had been to make line item edits to the report to alter the recommendations and make them more amenable or flexible to enable development. And that notion received some, I'd say, kind of critical feedback at the Historic Landmarks Commission in urban design, which I appreciated hearing that feedback. And one of the landmarks commissioners had made the recommendation that this be done in a different way, such as by adding an appendix. So that is what Bennett and I had talked to staff about, and what I moved in the plan commission meeting last week. I agree that resolving the conflict to provide that clarity is the most important part of what we're trying to do here, in my opinion. As to how we do that, if folks want to propose changes, we can discuss those, but I think the conflict between recommendations in an adopted report that have and are relevant in land use discussions are pretty important to reconcile with the zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. So the motion is to adopt item 77. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 77 and move on to item 78, which is Legisstar 85327, amending sections of the Mass and General Ordinances to modify the police civilian oversight board appointment process. President Figueroa Cole, a motion to refer?
Okay. Move to referral? Thank you.
Moved and seconded to refer back to the PCOB?
Yeah, it was in the agenda already. That was a mistake.
We did exclude it from the consent agenda. So we do need to dispense with it now.
So I have to look at the dates, huh? Yeah, I understand. Got it. Yes, so... Yeah, we'll be... Not gonna... Does anyone have the days in front of them? Can you please tell me? 4/16 for PCOB and back to council, 7/1, 2025. Thank you.
All right, so the motion is to re-refer item 78 to the PCOB on 4/16 and back to council on 7/1? On the motion, Alder Harrington McKinney?
I have a question, and would you let me know when I can?
You can ask it now.
Okay. I'd like to know if the Department of Civil Rights was involved in the... in these deliberations.
Alder Harrington McKinney, I don't know the answer to that, but with the referral, there is ample time for them to be involved.
Can I add that one?
You can't refer something to a department, but you can certainly request staff to take a look at the item.
Okay. I request the staff to take a look at the item.
Thank you, Alder. The motion is to re-refer. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, the item is re-referred. And that takes us to item 105, which is Legisstar 87483, adopting the updated elected and appointed official code of ethical conduct. This item is on for introduction, so the appropriate motion, President Figueroa Cole, is to introduce with the recommended referrals.
Move to introduce with the recommended referrals?
Moved and seconded to introduce with the recommended referrals. Those referrals are noted on the consent agenda document. On item 105, is there discussion or questions? Alder Harrington McKinney?
My question is that if the Alder who wanted to add additional recommendations could just share with us why these additional recommendations or referrals?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. So the reason that I am putting in these additional referrals, I think that we, as a body, need to be deliberate when we're looking at this code of conduct, because not only is it affecting us, but it also affects all the appointed officials. And so the reason that I'm having it sent... Originally, I had, I think, 49 committees, but I took it down to these 12 to get a sample, with the understanding that the other BCCs will also have an opportunity to provide feedback to us, because I think that with them being the bodies that are going to be held responsible and have to abide by this code of ethical conduct, that they should actually have a seat at the table to be able to have conversations about revisions, edits, or even possibly things that we, as a body, have not even thought about, to be able to be put into this code of ethical conduct. I know that it wasn't done when this was originally created, and I think that, in my opinion, that's what it should have been, and that's why I'm putting this forward now for these committees.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion is to introduce with referrals. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Govindarajan?
I object. Or place me as a no. I object. Or place me as a no.
Will note, Alder Govindarajan is voting no. Is there any further objection? Alder Harrington McKinney will be voted as... Noted as voting no. Anything further? If not, the introduction passes with two no's that will be noted in the record. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Alder Evers?
Adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.